Good morning, everybody. This is the Franklin County Fiscal Court, May 15th, 2020 work session. We welcome everybody and we're going to start with Mr. Jeff Hancock, who's here to talk about the election that's coming up. Jeff, welcome.
Judge, thank you. I apologize for not being able to be on the Zoom meeting. I'm having technical difficulties with my phone and the connection, so I apologize about having to come over. Can everyone hear me okay?
Can you all hear Jeff Hancock okay?
JW can.
JW, a little bit, okay.
Okay.
I'll make it a little closer.
You're not on camera, so you can't hear.
Do you want me to come?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can come a little closer, just so that you can be heard better.
Okay, right there, it's good.
Yeah, okay. Guys, I want to talk to you a little bit about the election today. This is obviously an unprecedented election. We're doing something, and everybody in Franklin County should know that the election's not happening because we didn't have it on Tuesday, or we didn't have it this upcoming Tuesday. So, this is a complete changeover from what we've done in the past. The actual election will run, there is, everyone's talking about Election Day. The fact of the matter is, we have Election 23 Days is what we're gonna have. Elections will run all of the month of June. It will run from June the 1st through June the 23rd. Couple of dates to put in mind. What we would like to encourage all the Franklin County citizens to do is first and foremost, there'd be a website going out on GoVote, ky.gov, which is the Secretary of State and the State Board of Elections site. That will allow you on Friday, May the 22nd, a live portal will go up. That live portal will allow you to go in and apply for an absentee ballot. This is a no-excuse absentee ballot. And when I say that, it means that anybody can go get an online ballot that, to be mailed to them. Now, I want to assure Franklin County citizens that this is not only secure, but it is the best way to vote at this point. They will be doing signature identification on every ballot that is run through this portal, so they will be able to identify that the person voting is the person that got the ballot, and it is the person that was intended to get the ballot. So, that ballot will come back to us, it will go through a voter, signature verification, and then your ballot will be counted and ran through the machine, just as if you handed it to me at a precinct. So, that's first and foremost, we would like to encourage everyone to try to vote by mail.
Is there a cost? Is there a cost to that?
There is not. There's a cost to us.
Yeah.
Franklin County residents will get their ballot for free, and we'll have a return envelope, and we also will have a drop box to drop it off.
Great, okay.
That's where we're going second with this. We have moved elections completely out of the clerk's office, and I would like to thank Keith Parker with the City of Frankfurt for allowing us to use the downtown old location of the Plant Board Building. We are locating all of our election services in the Plant Board Building. It's 317 West Second Street. We are gonna, and this is where we're gonna go from there, with, on the exception of the mail-in ballots, June the 1st through the 5th, we will have by appointment only. This is for our most vulnerable citizens in Franklin County. They can set an appointment, and they can in-office vote. That's only appointment, June the 1st through the 5th. June the 8th through the 23rd, we will have walk-in voting. Now, for us to have a successful election day, we need all the citizens. If everybody waits until the 23rd, there's no way this can be successful. We can handle, I've done the math, we can handle about 15% of the population on the 23rd. For 15%, for in-office voting, that's all that we can do. That means the other 85% needs to vote by mail or beforehand. Now, we're lucky, and we're gonna have the opportunity, on any other given election, you have 12 hours to vote. On this particular election, I'm giving you 74 hours of options to vote. 74 hours, this is no-excuse absentee voting. No one is gonna say, "Why are you here to vote?" They're just gonna allow you to vote. That's from June the 8th all the way through the 23rd. There's never, ever been an opportunity for you to vote like this. We should lead the Commonwealth. We will have more opportunities to vote than we've ever done, and you're gonna have the best opportunity in Franklin County of any other counties.
Okay, I know that everybody's gonna have a question, and this is one that I want to, I know the public is gonna ask, where will they vote if they're gonna vote in person? Is it, is there only one spot that they will be voting in at the, and that's the old Plant Board Office Building on Second Street?
Judge, we have some other things that we're arranging for the 23rd, but right now, what the public needs to know is, we're gonna be open at the Plant Board Building for in-office voting, from June the 8th through the 23rd.
Okay, okay. And then there could be some other announcements about this one?
There will be. We need the general public to know that, A, we would like to mail in a ballot first, first and foremost, and if they, if you're not comfortable with that, we're gonna offer you and give you the options to in-office vote for 74 hours, total.
Okay, okay. Okay, so, somebody has, there's background, if you could cut that off, thank you, it's coming through. JW?
Yes, Jeff, what were the hours be on the 8th through the 23rd?
We will vote, JW, I'm glad you asked, we will vote 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM during the week. On Saturdays, we will vote from 8:00, 8:00 AM until noon, and then the 22nd, we will have to shut down, we will go 8:00 to 4:30. On Election Day, what I'm calling Election Day, will be 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, which will be June the 23rd.
Okay, are there other questions? Other questions? Squire Muller?
Hey Jeff, thanks for, thanks for everything you're doing during tough times. I'm gonna ask you about money. What is this election gonna cost compared to previous elections?
There, there's shifting of money, and when I say shifting of money, the State Board of Elections is coming out, and they're picking up the cost of the printed ballot and the return envelopes. The county will have a cost of roughly, approximately $18,000 worth of mail that we haven't seen in the past, which should be offset that we usually pay the election officers. So, there's some offset in the $18,000 in mail costs that we'll have to put this election on, and that's if everybody did a mail ballot, so it's kinda give or take. If everybody does a mail ballot, we won't, that'll cost $18,000. I don't, I look for it to be around $11,000 in mailing costs, if everything comes together the way the rest of the country has. Now, we will have, in-office election officers, we will have, will be approximately $20,000. So, if everything came to fruition and came about, it would, the county's obligation would be, instead of $36,000, would be closer to $45,000.
Okay, we budgeted $74,000.
You budgeted 74 for the general.
Okay, okay, that's right, that's right.
And I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna be very, we don't know where we'll be in November. I would not mess with that budgeted number for anything, 'cause a general election that we're gonna expect to vote 80% of the population on, we don't know how we're gonna have to do it. I would not move a penny around in that election.
Okay, okay. Squire Moore?
Jeff, this isn't just a question for Franklin County, but what safeguards are taken throughout the state and through your office as far as counting the ballots and poaching the ballots?
What we're doing for that, Squire Moore, and that's a good question, is we are still using two Republicans and two Democrats, just like we would in a precinct. They're all gonna verify the envelopes through the electronic scanning. After that, they will all open them. If any ballots need to be recreated because they're mis-marked or anything of that nature, they will do it together. So, all ballots will be treated just like a precinct level, and all ballots will be scanned like a precinct level. So, you will always have two Democrats and two Republicans scanning.
And is that mandated throughout the state?
Do what, sir?
Is that the same throughout the state?
Is that mandated throughout the state?
That is the recommendation that came down from the Secretary of State's office and the Governor's office. Yes, sir.
Oh, and one more question. We're, we're doing the budget, is there not a, a primary or election next year?
That is correct. Next year is the off-year.
It's the general, though, the 20th.
Right, right.
You still have a November election, Lambert.
Right, of course, of course.
Okay, and that's part of us running on the calendar year, and you all running on fiscal year, so.
Squire Tracy?
Jeff, question. How is the absentee voter registration going now? And any idea what type of percentage of voters do you expect to vote by absentee?
Scotty, the absentee voting is not going as well as I would like it right this second, because, in my opinion, we started off behind the eight ball. When the state, no one was prepared for a catastrophe where we couldn't open all 44 precincts. So, let me say, everybody's doing the best they can right this second, but the portal has not been opened as quickly as I would have preferred. So, the absentee voting is not going at the, I would, I would like the already be open and doing it. The May 22nd date is very important for everybody to realize, and the reason we haven't come out with options quicker and sooner is because we just, the state wasn't prepared, so we couldn't open. We were prepared as Franklin County and our election office. We were very prepared to start a week ago, but they're just not prepared yet, so we're having to work old methods right now to process absentee ballots.
Okay, thank you.
Squire Sebastian?
Thank you. Jeff, good to talk to you. Wanted to check with you to talk to us a little bit about how this will be staffed, because you're, you're really running two functions. You're running the clerk's office, and then you're running a longer-term election process for the primary. Can you talk to us a little bit about how this, the staffing will happen, to make sure that both functions continue on seamlessly? And thank you.
Yeah, Sherry, that's a great question. Staffing has probably been the most difficult thing that we're doing right now at the clerk's office. We are still running half-staff. I don't know if you all know this, and I'm not sure how quick I want this to get back out, and when I say that, because of the crowds, I don't want any crowds showing up, but we have reopened our doors down here as well, at the clerk's office, with guidance from Tommy Russell, and him getting all of our, seeing our plans for in-and-out and no-touch systems. So, we're running half-staff, and we're running full-staff over at the election office, in a complete separate, complete separated situation. We will hire a part-time staff to come on. Kelly Everman's gonna come on and help us with the advertising base of this, and we will also have full-time election officers for all of this period of time, which will be, we have four Republicans and four Democrats, and there are two from each side are coming every day, and they're alternating every other day to be able to keep this precinct level open. I don't know if that makes that, what I just said confusing or not. I hope I answered your question, Sherry.
Squire Sebastian?
Sure, just, just a follow-up, Jeff. When these folks are brought up part-time, you indicated that Ms. Everman will come on part-time, and then you're gonna have some additional staff that come on part-time to assist with the election process. When they come on, are they receiving pay in the same rate that an election officer working each day, and I'm not sure what that is, $15? Is that how that works, or how is this gonna work, to their, their rate of pay? I'm just trying to understand that part of it.
Yes, ma'am. They're getting paid $125 a day for the short days, what I'm calling a short day, is from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and then they will be paid $200 for Election Day. So, it ends up being for election pay, for what you're used to seeing, which you usually pay out at a sum of approximately $35,000, will be approximately $15,000 for that Election Day. Now, Kelly Everman, I've always put a part-time person in my regular, every year payroll, I will be paying her out of payroll. The good news is, we will get $9,600 reimbursement from the State Board of Elections for these election officers, and I, I need to, the $9,600, I think will come directly to the Fiscal Court. I don't know that, but if it does come to me, it'll just be turned back over to you all to be able to pay these election officers.
Squire Sebastian?
Jeff, you indicated that Kelly's gonna come on in a little different role, maybe than everybody else, so does that mean she's gonna stay on after the election process? Or is she only coming on to handle the media surrounding the election process? I think you had mentioned that at the beginning, I just wanna make sure I understand that part of it. Thank you.
You're welcome. She is coming on for the election process only, but she starts, because we have to get the message out to all Franklin County residents, she starts on Monday. So, she plays a different role. She will work as an election staff, she will go on payroll, but she will be a part-time employee, so we won't be paying benefits.
So, how long would that, will she be on?
She'll work for approximately a month and a half. I mean, she'll be here all the way through the.
Through the election cycle.
But she starts Monday. I have to get her on.
Part of the election cycle.
Government, yes.
Understand, understand.
Yeah, I can't, the hardest part is gonna be communicating how everybody needs to vote, and that they're only gonna have from May the 22nd till June the 17th to use this portal. So, I have to have everybody go to the portal that's gonna do the mail-in, no-excuse absentee ballot, from May the 22nd to June the 17th.
Will you make sure that she gets that information to Andrew, so we can get it out on our Facebook page as well?
Absolutely. I plan on, matter of fact, I'm gonna need the help of all six magistrates to make sure that we're messaging it to all of their community.
You got it, yeah. All right, Squire Muller? Squire Muller?
Hey Jeff, yes, sir. Hey Jeff, thanks again. Hey, one quick question. You said there would be four Republicans and four Democrats helping out with this election. How were they chosen? Is it a lottery system, or are they handpicked?
There, a list is given to both the Republican Board of Elections from the Franklin County Board of Elections and the Democratic Board of Elections, and then they are chosen out of that list. Does that answer your question?
Each party?
Each party gives me a list, they, they're chosen, then they're accepted back by their party.
Their party picks the final four, is what you're saying.
And most people might not realize this, but Franklin County has a Board of Elections that's made up of myself, the sheriff, Republican member Kay, and a Democratic member Russ Wright. Kay Robertson and Russ Wright. And that's the Franklin County Board of Elections. So, they're the ones that vote to put the precinct officers in all the precincts, but in this situation, in the main precinct.
Any other questions? Squire Booth?
Is this the first election that Brenda Wise has not been on the Board of Elections? I wonder, because I just expected to hear her name, but I guess she has resigned from that duty. Is that true?
Marty, Brenda got ill back before the last election and was replaced by the State Democratic Party with Russ Wright.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Jeff, this is exciting, also kind of scary times, because we're, this is uncharted territory. We thank you. You, I know you've worked so hard, and matter of fact, let's, let's say this to your staff, they've worked very hard too, in this whole process of being shut down and opening back up, and then, then opening up on a part-time basis, and now opening up on a little different basis, but still opening up. So, thank you to your staff for their hard work and to keep the money flowing through, through Franklin County. We appreciate it.
Yeah, well, and thank you, guys. Tommy Russell has been a godsend in helping us get plans put together to walk in for entrance and exit, and our plans together. Keith Parker, of course, and my staff has done an amazing job working through this.
They have.
Thank you, guys. And my next on the agenda?
Yes, well, you're gonna, if you'll just hold on a second. Hold on, if you'll just stay here. All right, and you spoke with Tommy Russell. Tommy Russell, it is your time. Thank you. Let's give an update on COVID, talk a little bit about what is happening in our community, and then you and I are gonna make an announcement.
Good morning, everybody. I apologize, I'm dragging a little bit this morning. We've, we've actually had assets on Elkhorn Creek since, until midnight last night. We've got a, got a missing voter right now. They're still actively working the, working the event. Hopefully, hopefully, everything will turn out all right, so I'm gonna have to look at my Sid Rep notes, just to see, to make sure I get everything right that I, that I pass on to y'all today. And this last one was, I think, the 15th, so, or the 12th. Looks to me like we had, oh, maybe 18 cases, let's see, 15 cases on the 12th. All of them had, had been recovered, have recovered, except three, and we have three active cases in Franklin County right now. And Franklin County has done a marvelous job of adhering to the Governor's recommendations, just for the fact that, you know, if you look at some of the other counties that are our size, they've got, they've got way more cases than we, than we have. Everybody's done a really good job. Looking down through here, before I even get to trying to reopen stuff, you know, everybody knows we've got a shelter at Frankfordized Gym because of COVID-19, and last night, we had 34 people stay in that shelter last night. That breakdown, I think it was 25 men and nine women. And that, that shelter had to be open due to social distancing, things of that nature for the men's shelter, and even the women's shelters are full now, and that's, I will tell y'all, that's the most people that I ever remember having in a shelter in Franklin County, and we've opened a lot of them for a lot of things, but we've never dealt with anything like this. So, total, we've had 559, and I don't know how to, to term this, stays from people, a lot of them are the same people that are coming in and out, but we're picking up more and more people every day. And the impact on that is, for all the women, generally, if we get a female that's homeless in the county, the Women's Shelter, the Simon House, they try to put them in a motel room someplace. So, for the nine women we had last night, that was, that would be nine motel rooms that their budgets didn't have to absorb in, in COVID times. And, and the best, the worst, the best thing is, or what I can say about COVID times, it doesn't matter whether we're talking about shelters, whether we're talking about golf courses, whether we're talking about searches or anything like that. COVID just increases manpower numbers, because you've gotta maintain sanitation, disinfecting, you know, proper staff, training, everything like that. It's just an uptick on everything, you know. A lot of our agencies have lost jail staff, and Jake, Jake Bonner's doing the right thing. He's doing a really good job to keep this out of his facility. But again, that's, that's an impact to, oh, I'm sure at the Senior Citizens Center, to sanitation for the city, probably to Lakeview Park, I'm sure Charlie probably had some out there. So, you know, COVID just adds an extra uptick to the personnel that, that we need, and it's a difficult time because of budget constraints. I understand that. I will say that we're, Charlie and the judge and I met, and we have a plan in place to put golf carts back on to Lakeview Park, and open the park on the 18th. Everybody will have to have tee times, everybody's been walking it for free for four or five weeks now. So, we have, we've got a plan in place to put golf carts and, hey, back on, back to the golf course, open it up. We've discussed other venues that we could open, like Pickleball Court, there are some guidelines out there for that, and Charlie's working on those, and even looking at the Dog Park and things of that nature. This golf guys came up with their own plan, so slowly but surely, we're looking to get things back to as normal as it can be following the Governor's restrictions. He moved his restrictions, his 10-person restriction up a couple of days, just to get the weekend included. So, you know, for the weekend, it's 10-person groups, still maintaining social distancing, and I'm sure we'll see some issues with some of that, and have to remind people that, hey, this is, this is a deal, no more than 10 people, you've gotta stay at least six feet apart, you know, and things of that nature. Charlie's getting signs made up for the golf course, which is what we need, just to make sure everybody remembers, these are the rules, and this is what we need to do, and, and if, again, if it becomes an unsafe environment, then the judge, we'll have to talk and, and see what we need to do next, if we can't maintain, you know, if we can't maintain safe practices, then we need to have another conversation about this.
That's the reminder about walking, still out there.
Oh, yeah, the walking trails are still open. Everything's open out there. I'm trying to add more, more things open as we can, and I, I understand that Pickleball Court had a little bit more work to do on it. I'm not sure if it's been finished yet, but, but there were some guidelines out there on, on those things. Jennifer Hill Tennis Course, I'm trying to get them redone, reopened again, and the pool issue will probably come to the forefront here soon. I don't know if we'll get splash pads reopened, because those are high-volume, high-risk areas, where even though coronavirus doesn't live in properly chlorinated water, from everything that the experts are saying, still, I'm not sure there's enough water going through a splash pad to maintain the integrity of the, of the visitors to that. So, we'll just have to, we'll have to look and see as the Governor relaxes some of his restrictions for that.
Okay, before you ask questions of Tommy, we have one more announcement to make. And Tommy, as Jeff has said, and you've, let me say this, you have done an outstanding job, you and your staff, of trying to keep this community in line, and our community has listened to you, obviously, because, and knock on wood, our cases are low, for a community our size, 50,000, our cases are extremely low, one of the best in the state, really, per capita. At last court meeting, you, the squires, you all asked for a public hearing on Duncan Road, and with Tommy's help, Amy Feldman's help, and all of our staff, I'm going to announce today that June the 9th, at 5 o'clock, at, in courtroom B at the Judicial Center, we will have that public hearing. Now, all the particulars are not, we're not ready to announce quite yet, but they will be coming out next week, but it, it will be a type of venue where we will have, you will have, the public will have three different opportunities to present their thoughts and opinions. Number one, they will be allowed to come into the courtroom one at a time, and if they decide, if they decide to do that, we ask, they will be put in a queue, and Tommy will take care of the queue six feet apart in the hallways of the Judicial Center, and Tommy will, will man that and make sure that everybody's lined up that way. We will ask that everyone wear a mask, if they would, if they could, and if they don't, then there'll be another queue for those that aren't in, that are. And if they don't, then there'll be another queue for those that aren't in, that are, that want to do a physical presentation as part of this public hearing. The second part is that you can do it video conferencing. You, you will be able to do a statement via video conferencing. The third part is, you will also be able to, to send in a written question or, or written statement, I'm sorry, a written statement, and we will take those and read those during this time. So, there'll be three different opportunities for people to, to speak in one form or another. And this will be June ninth at five o'clock. At this point, all the rest of the information will be, will be going out via Cable Ten, State Journal, our Facebook page. And once again, like Tommy said, we'll ask that the magistrates will give it to you and ask that you share it on your Facebook pages as well. And so, so hang on on all that, I know you've got a lot of questions. We don't have a lot, we're, we're still working through the, through the particulars, but I think it's important to announce that June the ninth, five o'clock, will be that date, so everybody can set that in their, in their calendar. Okay, do you have any questions for Tommy? Any of you have questions for Tommy? Squire Sebastian?
Hey, Tommy, thanks, and I'm really sorry to hear about that missing voter on the creek. So, when, when you're on site, what additional services really come into play beyond what the fire department does? Just so the public has a sense of, of what you are bringing to the table above and beyond what our fire and rescue take care of. Thank you.
Are you talking about, Squire, are you talking about an emergency rescue? What, what kind of, what are you talking about situation?
Well, Tommy said he's been on site most of the night. I was just trying to assure the public of what, what he was bringing to the table. There, above and beyond what fire and rescue are doing, just so they have a sense of that.
Yes, ma'am, all, all, any missing person, any missing person falls to emergency management. Rescues fall to fire when emergency management gets on the scene for the first hour. And we coordinate, help to coordinate all those efforts with Frankfurt Fire, Franklin County Fire. SO was out there, I think Fish and Wildlife is out there today with Mark. After it turns, goes from rescue to, either it's a recovery or a missing person event, then we ask for assets that we believe are needed, which we would ask for anyway when we're out there. And it just gives us, goes into a unified command and makes the command a little bit easier situation for everybody involved, so they know where to come to. And thank you for asking, young lady.
Anybody else? Okay, all right. Tommy, thank you, I know you've got to, to get moving, we appreciate the update, thank you. And Wiro, are we on again for Tuesday night for magistrate's call in?
Not unless he has an update.
Not unless you have an update, okay. Okay, so he'll get with you, we're not on for Tuesday night unless he, unless we send out a message to be on for Tuesday night. Okay, thank you, Tommy.
Thank you all.
Wait a minute, hold on, Squire Muller, you want to, you have a question? No, never mind, okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on with the agenda, and the next item is authorization for approval of the minutes from a regular meeting of April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Are there any questions or, or concerns on the minutes? Seeing none, the next item is authorization to approve the county clerk's claim for calculation of motor vehicle and boat bills for two thousand and nineteen. Mr. Hancock, welcome back.
Thank you. This is a technicality, you pay half of it, the state pays half of it. It's just the bills that we send out on behalf to the citizens for us to be able to collect the taxes. So, it's the postcard that everybody gets.
Reminder of, of that you owe taxes.
It's your birthday.
On your birthday, birthday present, okay, okay. And the amount is eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight and seventy dollars, is, that's a half of the cost, right?
That is correct.
Okay, Squire Sebastian?
Yes, just, just one quick question, Mr. Clark. Is this number in line with what we saw last year? And do you have any estimates as we go into two thousand and twenty-one? If this number may stay, may stay flat, or there may be a decrease or an uptick?
That's, Squire Sebastian, that's number has been very static. It's been the same, it's been approximately eighty-five, eighty-three to eighty-five hundred dollars ever since for the last six years. I don't look for it to change.
The economy has nothing, it won't have anything to do with it.
It can, but if you sell a car, you buy a car. I mean, and our population hasn't grown, so our numbers have, our claims haven't grown, if that makes sense.
Squire Tracy?
Thank you, Judge. Jeff, quick question, would you mind, now that you're back open, just to make sure people don't flood, flood your office like you mentioned, would you mind to touch on the extension that, that people were given in regards to license?
To their motor vehicle license, Scotty?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay, absolutely. From starting March the first, and it's gonna be March, April, and May, all the citizens in Franklin County and in the state of Kentucky on their motor vehicle claims have a rolling calendar ninety-day extension. What that means is, if you were due March first, it didn't cover any of February. But if you were, if your bill was due in March, you now have an extension that goes March thirtieth, April thirtieth, May thirtieth. You're due June first.
And let's make sure that's a license plate, right?
That is.
That's not your driver's license.
The driver's license division through AOC, from what I've read, is not gonna open until soon as June first. We are open, we would hope that the citizens of Franklin County would only come down there if they need to. We still would like to do all your business by mail and/or by phone. We're doing a lot of renewals by phone and by mail and/or by web. But if you need to transfer a car, that's what we're here for. We're here to help you get through that process, and we wanna make sure that we do it in the safest manner. You know, getting back open has really opened my eyes to how much our society will change. Being able to have to separate everybody coming in and out, have to make sure that the line is no more than nine people in my entire lobby, have to make sure that there's no more than four researchers in my deep room. It's just really opened my eyes to what we have to do to, to get business going back. And it's, it's difficult, sometimes it's scary, some of the times, quite frankly, customers get agitated, and I can understand it. They've been told, no, 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 and then when you open back up, they might not have the right documents. And they're having to leave the, my lobby for the first time ever and go back and get the documents and come back. So, we know people are frustrated, we aren't taking cash, it's only a check or credit card. And we don't look for that to change anytime soon. It's just, we know times have changed, we know it's tough, we need everybody to work with us, because we're doing everything we can do to be open. So, I think that was a great question, Scotty, thank you.
Okay, any other, any other questions? Squire Muller?
Yeah, Jeff, thanks again. Any question on the fifty-six thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight number? Does that include state vehicles, or is that all local vehicle and boats?
It's local vehicle and boats. The state has, yeah, that's all local vehicle and boats.
Okay, so it does not include state vehicles, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, Jeff, thank you. Once again, please tell your staff thanks for their hard work, we really appreciate what they're doing.
Absolutely, thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the second reading and approval of an ordinance amending ordinance number eight relating to the zoning ordinance in Franklin County for three-plus acres of property in suburban Park subdivision located at one zero zero three and one zero zero five, Twilight Trail from Limited Commercial CI to Industrial Commercial IC. Mr. Hewitt, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, welcome, Mr. Hewitt.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning. You wanna discuss, you wanna just give a brief overview of this request?
Yes, sir, Canon Properties LLC filed an application for zone back amendment planning commission. The commission held an evidentiary hearing on March the twelfth, two thousand and twenty. They accepted testimony and evidence into the record. And established findings of fact that are on your ordinance before you. The planning commission has made unanimous recommendation of approval of the applicant's request. There was one condition placed by the commission on this, that an eight-foot fence be placed on the property and be approved by staff. And you should have a copy of the record I forwarded to you from the planning commission and have to answer any questions.
Squire Sebastian, I believe this is in your district, is it not?
Yes, sir, I was going to ask one quick question. Does anybody have a tab four in their book today?
So, it's left over from the last meeting, Michael asked that we not copy those again, so it's...
Well, speak up, tell them.
Oh, I'm sorry, it was in your last court packet, so it's the exact same material, it's just the second reading of the exact same material.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if we were supposed to get another one or not, all right, thank you.
No, Squire Muller had asked that we cut down on copying, so since there was no new material to be added on his request, and cut down on the copying.
Squire Muller?
Yeah, thank you for doing that, Tamara. Hey, Robert, thanks for everything. Multiple question, has there been any opposition from any of the neighborhoods or businesses around that area?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And I will, I will say, I, I just wanted to say, I have not heard from any residents in my, my constituency maintains pretty good communication with me about issues, so I haven't heard anything from there, is a positive or a negative in this regard?
Okay. Any other questions for Robert on this second reading? Seeing none, thank you, Robert, we're gonna move on. The next item is, the first reading of an ordinance relating to the budget has been removed. We're gonna take that off the agenda and put it back on at, at our next, we're gonna do actually a budget session on the May the twenty-second from eleven to one. And then we will have first reading after that, on the twenty-second?
That is...
Or on the twenty-eighth?
The twenty-second, you said we were gonna have the first reading after the budget work session.
Okay, all right. So, that is, that's when we'll be doing the first reading. The, there has been, there has, something has come up, and we brought this up back in March, and we, we talked about it. And Terry Bradshaw has asked that we pass her, her monies so that her people can get paid in July, and this doesn't go forward. Terry Bradshaw, are you on the line?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, so, Tamara, we were, this is, this was left off the budget, but it is the KCDC budget. It is the same that it's always been, and it is, you're asking for this to be put on? Terry, is that correct?
When, when we presented back in March, which is what we're required to do about ordinance, we, we discussed the fact that last year this budget wasn't approved until the end of June, and it was not approved as to what we had it budgeted for. So, we had to go back to my board, get it, get a new budget, and then bring that back to the county and get it approved again, at which point we could not pay our staff till, or pay bills till late in July. So, you all discussed that in March and said that you would come back with a, a decision at this meeting. So, that, that was kind of your all's decision.
Squire Blackwell?
I think we discussed that we would approve it at our, or, or recommended at our first reading. We're not having our first reading today.
Okay, I, I don't recall, either way, so is that what, would you all prefer to do that next week at our, after, during our first reading? Somebody speak up.
I'm ready to go forward with it today, but it's at the mercy of the court.
Hold your hand up if you wanna say something, Squire Sebastian?
Yeah, I think I had made some statements last time. I'm really, I don't feel personally in a position to put one entity that is a quasi-governmental entity in front of our entire county budget to fund. So, I would like to maintain the same position I had last year, same position I did earlier. I would like to take this up with the full budget and not, not have any separate discussions on one entity over everything else. Thank you.
Squire Tracy?
Yeah, I would agree with that statement. I would prefer to take it up at the full budget as well.
Mr. Sparks, Rick Sparks, are you on the, on the line?
Yes, sir.
So, this is the second year in a row that they're asked to do something in March, and then the court says, no, we don't want you to do it in March, and they want to bring it back. Do we need to change that ordinance? Does that need to change and say, and do something different because they're doing what they're asked, and then we're saying we don't want you to do what we, what the ordinance says? So, is there a way, so should we change this? Should we, I'm, I'm asking your thoughts on this, Rick?
Well, frankly, the ordinance works really well, when, when everybody works it really well. The problem that this ordinance is, and if you wanna refer to it, I looked it up quickly here real fast. It's ordinance five, two thousand and eight, it's amended, goes back to two thousand, two thousand and eighteen, pardon, five, twenty eighteen. It requires the, the, two things. It requires the authority to present for approval, quote unquote, section four, sub E, to the court in the city, their budget, where you're faced with an up and down vote on their budget. They're required to do that three months, at least three months prior to the end of the fiscal year, which they've done. Fiscal court's concern when that was presented originally for a vote was that the other budgetary allocations had not yet been established. So, as, as Squire Tracy and Squire Sebastian indicated, they felt that might be putting certain non-governmental entities, I guess, out of line for lack of evidence, and I don't wanna speak for y'all, but if you, you were concerned about the order until the entire budget's created. If you change the timing, and I don't know if you should or not, should's, should's kind of a big word, can. But the only thing that you would change wouldn't be the requirement of the authority in terms of when they have to present it, because that's, you know, that's ninety days prior to the official year, it's the way you kinda do it. It would be a consideration for a change of, when fiscal court has to consider it with finality. And the problem we faced last couple of years, or some odd, some odd years, is, is going right down to the wire with the budget, and then you've got kind of downstream log jams with other, other agencies who have to have their budgets approved, et cetera. See, being one of them, they have to have their budget approved so they can pay it. The creative ordinance doesn't appear to allow amendments, et cetera. They present their budget for approval, you vote it yes or no. But there's no timeframe when you'd have to vote it, it's a practical timeframe, in that they have to get their budget approved so they can start allocating their money, so they can start paying it first and exist the year. So, long, long story, long answer to a short question was, if you change something, the change should probably consider the timeframe under which fiscal court has to consider it, vote it over nailing it.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll bring it up. Ms. Terry Bradshaw, are you on the, still on the line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, well, next Friday, at eleven o'clock, we'll be doing our, another budget session. And at that time, on, on there will be... And at that time, on, on there will be the first reading. And I think I heard the squires say that they wanted to make it part of the first reading. So we will, we will bring your budget up at that time for the, as part of the first reading.
I will just inform the court just so that you're aware. So our board meets on Tuesday. That was the reason that it was scheduled to be deter, uh, excuse me, to voted on at this meeting, because our board meets on Tuesday. So that would then again put our board not having the revised budget, if there is one, until the June, let's see, June, sorry, I don't have my calendar, June 16th meeting. And so it would not be approved until the mid-July meeting. So again, you're gonna run into having staff here that are not paid until late.
And court, let me also, let, let me remind you, the nuance of, of the way this ordinance, the creating ordinance was, is written. They prepare the budget upon approval. It's submitted to the court for approval. It's a yes or no vote. If you vote no, then they have to go back and submit another one. Of course, then they're out of time because the three months didn't get satisfied. There's not a whole lot of building opportunities to, to modify the budget from the court's end. The budget has to be presented by the authority, not the, not the court. So there's, there's not a lot, there's not a lot you can do with it, is, I guess is my point. You either approve it or you don't.
Well, but, but what happens is if, if what she's saying is, and I understand is that time is, is of essence, it, it, it could be just a straight up yes or no. And then if it's, if it's a no, then I, then, I don't, well, now let me take that back. I don't think it could be a straight up yes or no. If they're gonna, if they say, no, we're not gonna accept it, then we have to go back, they have to say what they're going to accept. Because the second part of it is, she's gotta go back and with her board and say, okay, this is what the county is recommending for, for money. So there's a quandary here of, of time. Because it's not just a matter of the fiscal court, it's a matter of what the fiscal court does and then what her board has to do after that. So I guess.
That's correct. Pardon me, the nuance is fiscal, it's presented, fiscal court either approves it or denies it. If they deny it, then the authority has to modify it on their own, at which time they present the other one for again, a straight up vote, yes or no. There's no, it, it, we reached, we, we reached a similar quandary in another matter, sort of a ping pong game on another event a couple of months ago where things had to be changed by the respective bodies. And it caused a time lag in the middle of it. There, there's a problem. The only thing the court can vote on though is, is to approve the budget as presented. If it's declined, then they have to start again. And then they have to present another one for an up or down vote.
Yeah.
That is correct, Rick. And then just to add more nuance to this mess, this agency is self-insured. So we, we would obviously not ask our staff to work without the ability to get paid. So we would just have to close the office ultimately until that is voted on. But that, therein lies another problem because we are self-insured. So we still have to pay that unemployment insurance. They, they would be able to draw unemployment insurance. And we would have to pay that unemployment insurance through here because we are a self-insured agency. But we wouldn't have a budget approved, so we couldn't prove, but we couldn't pay that.
And that goes back to the judge's question about amending the ordinance. If you were to consider amendment, the only thing that, that I see on it that, that has a, that causes problems is the timeframe under which the court must act upon presentation. The timeframe for presentation is clear, but there's no timeframe on the other side. And the court rightfully wanted to treat it as part of the bigger picture, which causes, which causes practical problems, not legal problems, not ordinance problems. But it is a, a practical problem that needs to be fixed by all parties, because if you run to the wire, that's what you get.
Squire Muller?
Thank you, Judge. I guess I'm a little confused because this isn't even on our agenda, first of all. I would agree with Squire Sebastian and Squire Tracy. I do not want to get rushed into making a decision before we take care of our mandatory budget. I guess I would, I would maybe request that her board maybe add a, a board meeting or two, just in anticipation of our schedule.
Well, that's another way of, of dealing with it. I'm, I'm trying to, what I, what I was talking with our attorney about is this is, this is never, this is a new court and I understand that. And you, this has never happened before and the, everybody, all other courts have followed along and saying, okay, this is it or, or whatever. But this is the second year in a row that the timeframe doesn't fit suit your all's thought or, or, or idea. And so do we need to change the timeframe? Would it be better if we changed it? So she presents it the middle of May, that the, that the budget for KCDC is presented May by, May 15th. And that way we're deep, we're deep into our budget and they can move forward and get things done. So, you know, we're, KCD's an important entity in our community and so we can't afford to have them shut down for a month. There's a lot of jobs out there. So, but that's, that's my, that's my point. Squire Moore?
Judge, no, I don't think I would change that because we need that when we start working on our budget. I don't have a problem with going on it and okaying it now, because I, in no, no way, no how do I want to deny their budget.
Squire Muller, I guess we can, we can add, we can add board meetings to our schedule. But these folks are business people who serve on my committee, so they kind of need to know that ahead of time. We need to set that up, you know. I can't, can't do it three days ahead. So if you all can give me clear guidelines as to when you think you would have this approved, then we would have to go back and have a board meeting and then we would have to come back to you and get approval. And then I have to go back and have another board meeting to approve it. So that's a lot of groups to get together in a short period of time. So the sooner I know what that schedule looks like, more likely it is that I can make that happen.
No, and I, I understand, and I, I don't want to be difficult, but you know, especially this budget year with everything going on, I mean, we're having a really tough time trying to figure out how we're gonna make ends meet. I would say, I think like the judge said, after next Friday, we might have a better handle on, you know, where we are with the overall budget. I'm hopeful.
Y'all, but, but there's, there's one, one last, one last reminder. The, the ordinance has been followed to the left. The problem is the, the practical application of, of that timeframe where budgets are, are not finalized earlier, but later, because you could do it earlier. That puts the logjam at the end. So in terms of going and changing the ordinance to say, for example, presented in May, well, you've just invited yourself a sweet little problem, because I can promise you, that was presented in March. And here we are, May, and it's not been finalized. Until the budget's done, you're, you're just, you're just building in an additional delay.
Well, my point is, is that we've got, for two years in a row, we've had this delay. So it's, it, it, it is a delay. I'm just trying.
My, my problem that is, that's not the law's fault. That's because understandably so with the budget concern. The desire was to vote on it as part of a total package, so you know what the total revenues and allocations were. That's not a modification, that's not a grounds to modify the law. That's a grounds to how you apply the law. And, and there's, there's good reasons to do all of it. I certainly wouldn't recommend a delay in the presentation of the budget. But at the most, accelerate the schedule under which it has to be approved or denied, both for the agency's benefit, so they know what you're dealing with, as well as the budget, because you'd consider that a, a solid con. Much like the, for example, the fire truck, you know, going into it, it's gonna be the X number of dollars and you build your budget from there.
Okay, so let me get a, Squire Moore?
I would just suggest to, to, to the party involved that get used to it, because it looks like this is the way it's gonna be, but I wouldn't change the ordinance.
Okay. Well, if it's gonna be four years in a row and it, and it, and it, she's following what the ordinance says, but we're not following what the, what the ordinance asks us to do, then obviously the ordinance isn't working exactly the way it's supposed to be done. So that's all I've got to say about that part of it. So let me, hold on, Squire Sebastian, if you would. Is, do you, does anybody absolutely say, because of the timeframe, that no, we, I do not want it on the agenda at, next week as part of our, at the end of our budget session for the first reading? I'm not asking you to be unequivocal about it, but Terry needs a timeframe. And as you said, Squire Muller, if, if we can say that next week at the end of our budget session, it looks like we can do a first reading, then she's got, she will have the ability to talk with her busy group and say, the court has given the first reading and so now we can go ahead with the budget process, whatever that is for KCDC. Do you all understand what I'm saying? Can you, can you give assurance to, to Terry, to the best of your ability, to the best of your ability, that at the end of the budget session next week, we can, we can move forward so she can move forward? Squire Muller, you talked. Yes?
Judge, what you're talking about there is the second item on the agenda for the 22nd, their budget session, first reading. And then approval of the development authority budget.
That is correct.
Resolution. There still has to be that action to approve that budget.
Okay. That's a good point. Okay. Okay. And so what would happen would be either that budget is left intact or that budget is changed during next week's meeting. If the, if the majority.
That budget would either be approved or not approved.
Okay. As part of the process and whatever. Okay. Everybody okay with that? Squire Sebastian, you've had your hand up for a while. I think you want a question. We can't hear you, Squire Sebastian. We can't hear you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Two, two lines of, sorry, are you hearing? Are you hearing me, sir?
You're cutting out, but we're, you're cutting out.
Okay, I'll, I'll try again. So is it, hopefully it's coming through. So one, I want to raise a point of order is, in looking at the agenda, I'm not sure if we're discussing a matter that's not on it for, for a lengthy period of time. And I want to go back, Judge, to a statement that you made, because the ordinance only indicates that the budget will be presented to the court. It does not indicate that the court will take action. So, you know, we need to be clear on what the ordinance actually says.
I thought it said and approved.
I would not, sir, I would not be so inclined, if you're asking members of the court, to take this up outside of other budget matters. So if we meet next week, I would not be so inclined to single this out for discussion and approval for action. I would not. Ahead of the county obligations that we absolutely have to take care of. Thank you. Just my comment. Thank you.
County attorney?
Squire is exactly correct. As I recited that ordinance, it requires the presentation to be done three months prior to the fiscal year. There is no timeframe under which the court is required to approve it. If you read subsection E, the authority has timely presented it. We were, or the court indicated, I guess, back in March, that in anticipation that the budget would be ready for a reading today, that the 15th would be the back return time. There's a lot of really good reasons why, as squires have indicated, that they want to make that from a practical standpoint, part of the overall budget discussion. Unfortunately, the, the ordinance requires a separate action as to the authority's budget by way of a vote. And it's getting into crunch time. That's why the 15th was selected to approve it, so they can go ahead and do their processing and planning for the fiscal year. So, so again, it's not an ordinance problem. Everybody's done what they need to do on the ordinance timely and follow the requirements. It's, it's an implementation quandary because of the budget still being worked on and the inability to, to approve that. Or the court not approving that or, or addressing it until that was, the budget was completed for first reading. And that's, that's still in play. So Squire Sebastian's correct, the ordinance has been satisfied by the authority. We said that back in March. This was the date in anticipation that the budget was gonna be at least for first reading. It's still being worked on and it requires a separate approval above and beyond the budget. So again, you're facing an implementation problem. It's one of those you get in questions of all the time, well, that law needs to be changed. Law is just fine. It's how you, it's how you get work it timewise and then you add the overlay of, of, of the COVID problem, et cetera. Under the best of conditions, much like last year was good conditions, it still took a time to make that and the court, in their wisdom, thought that that needed to be part of the overall budget process. And now we've got this incredibly difficult world to deal with, or y'all do, as, as the body politic in evaluating the budget, which this is a critical part of. And it's a mandated part of it by law that the court passed when you created the ordinance or created the authority. So it's, it's a mess. And the problem that the mess is that, that Terry and their folks need to know what to do on their budget. And the budget's still being worked on. So the only thing I can say on it, get it done as quick as you can, vote it up and down and get that budget passed so you're not facing the, facing crunch time where you got shutdowns, not because of lack of money, your lack of finances, it's just that the vote didn't occur at the time of the time.
Well, and so this is my point. They're asked to, to give it the first of March. And in years past, it was upped or down and always upped the first of March until this new court has come in. Since for two years in a row, they're being, they're asked to, we're not gonna vote on it until we go through the whole budget process. And that, and, and that, I'm not, that's not my issue. My issue is, is that ultimately, ultimately, it has to be approved by the fiscal court. And so obviously I'm hearing from the court that they don't want to approve it as, after next week. And I don't, now, if that is the case, then now we're going into the first of June, which is the May 28th meeting. And I, and once again, as Squire Muller asked, so we're kind of going in circles here. Squire Muller said, well, why don't you have your board just set up other meetings? Well, and Terry said, that'd be great. But Terry can't do that until there is a decision made by the court to handle the budget, to either redo the budget or accept the budget. So now we're, now we're delaying it for another two weeks. I, I, I think, I don't know. I, I'm tired of dealing with this. I'm sorry that this has come up. Terry, I apologize to you and I apologize to all your board. Terry, I apologize to you, and I apologize to all, uh, uh, your board and all that, and I'm sorry that this has to be so difficult. I was hoping it wasn't gonna be difficult. And to answer Sherri Seb- uh, uh, Squire Sebastian's question, it is my authority to put, add or subtract items on the budget, and this was not on there, and you asked that it be on there today. You called us and you said, it's not on there, we need to move on this, and that's why I added it, uh, or wanted to add it. I asked to add it to, uh, to, to the, uh, uh, agenda. So, it is not gonna be on the agenda, and the, uh, um, right now, I'm not sure that I'm ready to, uh, add, uh, first reading on the budget on May 22nd now, the way the, the court is acting. And so, uh, uh, I was hoping that we would not go like we did last year, where we go to June 30th trying to pass a budget. But it looks like we're going to be moving towards that realms, and I hope that that doesn't happen again. That's about all I, I'm gonna say on that. The next item on the agenda is authorization to prove a resolution approving projects recommended by District Five Maintenance Staff of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for the 2021 Rural Secondary Road Program. Mr. Mitchell?
Well, yeah, I'm here.
Hey! Aren't we having fun, John?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right, good deal.
I guess this is the state's presentation like they normally come in and do. Uh, what I've looked at, is there a rural secondary funding? To do, uh, rural secondary maintenance? Uh, looks like they laid out a plan for a little over three miles of paving out on Mountain Side Road. And I've drove that road recently, and it does need it, that's for sure. Um, I'm sure there's other roads that need that too, but they probably fund it out of some other fund. Uh, this one looks like it's getting smaller every year.
Yeah. I'm sure Squire Moore doesn't want, uh, that done. Uh, uh, I can't believe that he would. What, okay, Squire Moore, you wanna say something?
Yes, Judge, I, I've been pushing for this for, for, for four years now. This road is one, it, it is the worst road, state road in, in Franklin County. Uh, it, uh, it's, it's way, way past good.
Okay, Squire Tracy wants me to say that that's a matter of opinion.
Squire Tracy, come drive Mountain Side.
That, that's a matter of opinion, but anyway. Okay, uh, you're all for it then, right? You're all for it, okay. All right, Squire Tracy?
Um, Judge, I'm sure it is in bad shape. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. Uh, do we have any idea, any feedback from the state, uh, in regards to Shadrack Ferry? I know I've been beating that drum, uh, for quite some time now, and we've met with state officials, and it's, it, I guess it's my understanding that, that the rural secondary road projects, uh, were selected internally. So, you have any idea where we're at on Shadrack Ferry?
Uh, John, have you heard anything? Cause I, cause, uh, we, uh, not just you, Scotty, has been beating that drum. I have with you, and so has John, and, uh, and the state is very much aware of that. So, uh, have you heard anything, uh, John Mitchell? I haven't.
Not a lot, not heard anything.
I haven't either.
Okay, but it has been turned in, uh, from downtown as far as to be on the list. Again, after we met with, uh, Deputy Secretary Hancock and Representative Graves and Graham, along with you, Judge Wells, the sheriff, I think everyone understood. Mr. Mason, the finance guy, I think, when we all left that room, I, um, I think everybody felt confident that, uh, Shadrack Ferry was right there at the top of the list. Um, any ideas, have you heard anything back in regards to that? And was it submitted to be looked at?
Yes, uh, as a matter of fact, uh, about a month ago, or less, about three weeks ago, I did have an opportunity to talk with, uh, Transportation Department, and I once again reemphasized Shadrack Ferry. And, uh, they said, we, we know, we know about Shadrack Ferry. So, that's, that's about all I can say at this point in time. Uh, I understand your concern, and I understand that you think it's the worst county, county road in, in Franklin County.
Well, I, I agree. Uh, Squire Moore's roads are gonna need to be paved because they're gonna need a way to get to the river to dig Shadrack Ferry out of it. It stays in the shape that it's in.
Okay, uh, Squire Tracy, we haven't given up.
Bernie would agree as well.
Yeah, I understand. We haven't given up, and we're all, and we're all for you. And every time, every opportunity I've had, I've told them that's what we want, and there may be some, some other monies coming in that we'll be able to get in. And I promise you, Shadrack Ferry is at the top of the list.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay, uh, Squire Booth?
Uh, well, the District Five got me excited because that's the number of my district in the county. But, um, but now I understand that only state roads can be included in this, uh, list.
Yeah.
So, uh, but I do want to ask about the, uh, subdivision roads that were not finished to, uh, county standards when the subdivision was developed. There's one in Cool Brook that has been waiting two or three years, and I'm hoping John Mitchell has, uh, uh, considered doing it this year.
John, you wanna speak to that?
I would probably defer to the county attorney on that one. We discussed that a while back. Uh, it seems like the last couple of times that we have had some, uh, people wanting to bring roads into the system, it seems like it's not gotten anywhere because of some ordeal. Uh, do have those two, I think, we went back and looked at the years and all that. Um, I believe it's a 15-year deal. Uh, we're getting close, I believe, on one of them, and the other one may be another year or so out.
Oh, I thought it was nine years, but I'm, I'm sorry. I guess I need to do more study. Okay, well, thank you for information.
Okay.
The orphan road standards requires it to have been not adopted, not up to standards, but otherwise open to the public and used without restriction for at least 15 consecutive years prior to the petition for adoption. And that incorporates the state law. And then the other requirement, uh, the other requirements address the petition, viewers, uh, estimates of cost, et cetera, and ultimately, uh, the court's decision to adopt it. Because those roads by definition can't be brought up to the county standards. If they can, and the developers fail for whatever reason to have done so, that's, that's a whole nother ordinance and statutory section. But the ones, the ones that we've addressed were ones that, for whatever reason, either they were old roads, never adopted, not part of subdivisions, aren't up to county standards, can't be brought up to county standards, um, or there are otherwise problems that prevent, preventing it from being up to subdivision or road standards. And if y'all, since I'm having some really awesome internet opportunity today, it's ordinance 9, 2006 series. Uh, if you want to review the terms of, of the orphan roads and the, the strict statutory requirements, and it tracks, it tracks the state law. So, Squire Booth, if you want to pull that, it's 9, 2006 as amended.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions on, on the, uh, rural secondary program? Okay, the next item is authorization to prove a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for grant funds under the, uh, under VOCA through the Commonwealth of Kentucky. Uh, Anne, are you on the line?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning to you, Anne.
Yes, this is authorization for our annual application for the VOCA program, uh, Victims of Crime Act. And, uh, I've given you the, the background and also the, the cost, uh, the match cost to fiscal court. I've also invited Sky Hanson to join us here today, and, uh, Mr. Sparks can also speak to the effectiveness of the program. Should you have any questions?
Uh, Sky, are you on the line?
I'm here, Judge.
Yeah, would you briefly go over, uh, just for who, the audience that's listening, as well as the squires, uh, what the, what the Victims of Crime Act, the, what, what your office does?
So, I am basically a liaison for, um, any victim of crime to the court system. I provide services of education and support and, uh, ongoing updates for any victim of any crime in Franklin County. I work with Mr. Sparks as well as Mr. Cleveland with the Crime Law Attorney's Office. And, um, I do everything from domestic violence to, uh, families, survivors of homicides. Um, I spend on paperwork and finding resources, accompany victims to, uh, court hearings and give them updates in court hearings by a range, um, meetings with prosecutors and, um, help them understand what, um, basically what the court is doing and how the process works.
Thank you, Sky. Uh, Brittany, I may, I'm sorry, Brittany, I'm looking at the, Sky. Anne, would you, uh, uh, talk about the particulars of this grant? And we've, I think we've had this grant for years, haven't we, working on this?
We have, we've had this, uh, actually, this grant precedes me. Uh, so I've been working with it for, uh, the last 13 to 14 years, and it went back further than that. I think at this time, for the last few years since Sky has been on board, it's been, I would hold it up against any, any program in the state of Kentucky that this is so effective. Um, for example, in the fourth quarter of our last grant year, which would have been, uh, July, August, September of 2019, Sky served 122 people with over 887 services in that three-month time. And even looking at the statistics, over half of those victims were under the age of 17. So, um, you know, I'm sure that Mr. Sparks can also speak to the effectiveness and the value of this program. I think it's a great, uh, it's a great value for what we have to match. Uh, starting out this program, the match is 50%. Because we've been an ongoing participant in the program, we're at a 20% match. Uh, so we get a lot of effective, uh, help for our, uh, victims of violence and crime through a little bit of match money. So, I, you know, I thoroughly endorse the application for, uh, continuance of this program.
Okay, uh, Squire Muller, you've had your hand up.
Thank you, Judge. Uh, Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't this, uh, what Larry Cleveland, Judge Williams, and Judge Shepard, and I believe yourself spoke on in depth last year? Is that correct? We have, we have every year that it's come up for consideration. What we've found, well, two things. Last year was sort of, uh, a little different. We were facing that constitutional amendment, and we pointed out that, that these services, we tried to put them already into play that was required under, uh, that amendment that was subsequently attempted to be modified, dealing with victims of crimes. Uh, we also pointed out the, the different roles frankly that we act in as, as prosecutors or even adjudicators like the judges do, and the importance of being able to facilitate, um, interactions between the court system and victims of crimes. It's, it's a really scary world for people who are already in a really, really scary world. And then you have to deal with an extremely complex legal system that, um, that can get overwhelming under the better times, and people don't have resources, and people don't know what to do. And Sky, and, and this program in general, but Sky in particular, has done an awesome job in making sure that, that individuals are aware of, of what's going on. Um, we have a lot of situations where, for example, in, in my court, and I think Larry's too, officers are responsible for taking charges. And then, maybe, maybe they, they, you know, they're, they're a triage, people shoot at them, so they're arresting the bad guy. And the, uh, the victim may have additional resources that are available, but they don't know about it. So, I ask Sky frequently to, to kind of run interference and contact those guys or those girls and say, you know, if you, if you offered this program, is this available? Is this aspect of proof available? Um, do we got the medical records that we need? Do they have the examinations that we need? So, we can pursue the, the criminal cases. Because that's what we do. We're, we're not, we're not social workers or liaisons. We're, we're, we're players on that field. And she does a great job with that program to ensure that those things are, are prepared and aware so we can do our job and get those folks, uh, properly advocated, properly served. And at the end of the day, safe. Let me emphasize that, safe. That's the thing of the game. Okay, I can't say enough, I can't say enough about that program.
Okay, thank you, Rick, and thank you, Sky, for what you do.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, okay? Uh, next item is authorization to prove a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for the 2020, 2021 Waste Tire Grant Program with the Department of Environmental Protection. Brittany, are you on the line, Brittany?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, thank you.
So, this is a grant that, um, Franklin County applies for every year for about the last seven years or so. Um, what it is, is, uh, a way for the carry to dispose of waste tires collected by the road department uh, throughout the, the fiscal year. And then this funding from the state, uh, pays for the disposal of those tires. Um, we have been allowed to apply for the total amount, or the, the maximum allowable amount, um, which is $4,000. Uh, and, uh, it, like I said, it's used to pay for disposal of, of these tires, um, near the end of the year. There's no match required with this grant. So.
Okay, questions for the, uh, Waste Tire Grant Program? Squire Sebastian?
Yeah, just one quick question. Um, is there any estimate, and, and Brittany, you or John can take this up, on the total cost for waste tires across the county? Just that, that you have been able to assess?
Yeah, I have, um, the amount from last year. Um, if I can find it, I apologize. Um, John, do you know off the top of your head?
I can't remember, but I don't think we ever used the total of $4,000. Probably, you know, half of that, something like that. But we usually accumulated the tires to load a, uh, semi-trailer. So, there's several tires in that, but we don't normally use the whole $4,000.
I've got it right here. For, uh, 2018, 2019, uh, our amount that, of the $4,000 we used was $2,150. That's what we were billed to take care of it, uh, to take care of the amount of tires we had. So, we returned, um, $1,850 to the state.
Uh, Brittany, do you have an oppor- I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead, Squire.
That's okay, thank you, Judge. Um, as a follow-up to that, um, how do we, how can we maximize the amount of resources? For example, I've seen some tires out, and I've picked them up, put them on the back of my truck, and dropped them off before, because I've seen them out on the side of the road. Uh, I'm assuming those get included in that process. Uh, I just want to try to, as, as we are all trying to do in, in these times, is to maximize the resources that we have available to us. Um, so how can, how can we, as magistrates, help do a better job to take care of that?
Um, Billy Joe and I have talked about potentially, uh, doing, doing, uh, some kind of an increased effort on tires that are, are on the roadside. Um, haven't actually, it's just been the, the beginning stages of talking about it because this grant, um, just came up and is, is something that we discussed recently. Um, so we've talked about some kind of, uh, more concerted effort, and then potentially doing two, uh, contracting for two different removals throughout, uh, the fiscal year. So, having, you know, maybe- So having, you know, maybe one in the fall or early winter and then one at the end of the grant period to use more of that money.
Okay. Squire Muller?
Brittany, do you have any information on tire amnesty in Franklin County or surrounding counties for this year?
Tire amnesty will not happen in Franklin County until fall of 2021. I believe, as far as the surrounding counties, there were supposed to be a couple of events in the beginning of this spring. But all of those, as far as I'm aware, have been postponed. And there is no guidance from the state yet as to whether or not they will happen or when.
If you hear of anything in the fall, let us know, please.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Brittany, the second item is authorization to approve a resolution authorizing Franklin County to enter into a contract with Recollect Systems for web-based application focusing on solid waste management information for residents in the county.
Yes, so revisiting what we discussed two weeks ago, I took all of your comments and questions into consideration and did quite a bit of research. So I've been able to secure a funding source so that this program will cost the county nothing outside of staff time, which is already built into my job. So the funding source, I've discussed with Central Kentucky Holling, who is our residential trash hauler. They're on board to cover the costs associated with Recollect for years two and three, should grant funding not be awarded. However, I can also amend the grant request once we receive approval from the state. And if they approve Recollect to be funded in year two, I can, I can ask that we amend it so that that funding can be used for something else. I can't do that now with the current grant because it's way past the period for amendments. But I would be able to do that for 2020, 2021. The reason I reached out to CKY is because there's a line in our hauling contract that states that they must spend money to distribute information directly to residents regarding recycling, scheduling, and all other program amenities. And this would satisfy this item. So not only would they cover the Recollect app, but they would still be responsible for the, for putting ads in the paper regarding any kind of holiday schedule change or major changes to the curbside program. While they would pay the contract price, I would manage the entire system for the county. Any inquiries that residents have, I will handle. If I need to pass them along to them, I will do so. As far as notifications, whenever they tell me about potential delays or route changes, I will send that to residents. Figured this is the best way to do it, to minimize the extra parties that are within the system. As far as customer personal information, which was something that was brought up at the last meeting, I did speak with their representative. And what she was able to tell me is that emails and phone numbers are stored in the system only when residents sign up for notifications. But they do not have to sign up for notifications if they choose not to. So there's no connection to the resident outside of signing up for those notifications. Addresses are already stored in the system because that's how we're able to determine route information and produce schedules. Recollect did also assure me that they perform surety analysis yearly to make sure that their servers are safe and protected against any type of hacking or anything. I was also in touch with the solid waste coordinator from Polaski County and got a little bit more information from them. They have had this program in place since May of 2018. And it has been funded by the state recycle grant for the last two years. They say it's a vital part in overall managing of their solid waste. It's been a huge success. They've reduced call volume. They've had about 8, 8,500 searches in their Waste Wizard, which is the tool I mentioned, that residents can go in to search on their own how they could dispose of certain materials. This, I mean, like I said, it's reduced their call volume since people would rather have the ability to look up this information for themselves. And they can do so at any time of day. They've had about 45,000 schedule views. And there's only about, as of 2015, there's about 26,000 households in Polaski County. About 2,300 people have downloaded the app, which has resulted in 55,000 user sessions. So that's, you know, how many times people have actually gone in and accessed it and are looking and searching for things on the app. What I don't have from them is any kind of data related to the actual website of it. Wasn't able to share that with me. But they do have a 4.8 out of 5 star rating. And a lot of the reviews that I was able to see about the app say that people love the ability to get these notifications. Let's see. So as I mentioned at the beginning, the only cost for the county is staff time, which is already built into my job. I would do the upfront work to get the app up and running while still in the office answering calls. And then I would maintain the app and respond to residents like I would when I would be answering phone calls as well as doing my other job duties. It would cross over and could reduce the amount of, reduce the need for road department staff to return to calls about random items on the roadside so that they can actually use that time to focus on other projects. Outside of what Billy Joe already does with the appliance pickup and stuff. And, let's see. So the only other point I want to make about this is that the court did agree to use Recollect on March 28th, 2019 with Resolution 11 from 2019. It was, this application for the filing of the Kentucky Pride Fund Recycling Grant in 2019, 2020 was unanimously approved. And Recollect was presented in that application. So at this point, I'm just bringing the contract portion of the agreement in front of you to fulfill the remaining portion of the grant agreement with the state. If the court decides not to go through with using Recollect, the court will be asked by the state to return the unspent grant funds because Recollect is what those funds were approached for.
All right, thank you, Brittany. Squire Booth, you've had your hand up?
Oh, yes. Well, the way, I was just interested in how the information, waste management information, and that she has answered that pretty much. The residents want to get rid of waste that they see on their way to town, to work, or back, you know, and they can use this application to do that. And that is a very, very important task to me as magistrate in my district. So that would, that satisfies my question.
Okay, thank you. Squire Muller, you're next, and then Squire Blackburn after you.
Thank you, Judge. We actually, I think the court knows that I'm on the task force with Brittany. And we actually had a video conference yesterday and talked about this. Brittany, could you talk a little bit about, one thing you touched on yesterday, and the court might want to hear, is that when things get put in the wrong place, we get charged. And I think you said right now is $1,500 a load or a month or? Could you touch on that a little bit, please?
Yes, so what you're referring to is the rates of contamination at the Lexington recycle facility. So when our truck, or when Central Kentucky Holling's trucks take a contaminated load to the recycle center, and when I refer to contaminated, what I'm saying is people are throwing trash or non-recyclable items in their recycle cart and that gets picked up and taken to the recycle facility. So when they dump the trucks out and they see all this trash, they assess penalty fees. And what happens is if we accumulate so many penalty fees, we won't be able to use that facility. So, but what Squire Muller is referring to is when everyone was put on the state home order at first, the end of March through the first week of April, we had a contaminated load just about every day for a seven-day period, which resulted in about $1,500 in penalty fee that the county does have to pay. There is a 50-50 agreement in place with the newly approved contract with CKY. That was, that went into effect in September. So we are able to split that cost with them, but that is still a cost that we are bearing.
So Brittany, would you tell the court and the general public, as you apply for this Recollect app, how can this app help to defer that cost?
Sure, so a lot of the common items that keep showing up in these contaminated loads are paint. We've got like insulation material, clothing, and a lot of just, there's metal, there's large plastic items that don't fit into our bottle or jug category. So what this app would provide is a way for residents to utilize this tool and search for how to dispose of those items. What is commonly referred to as wish cycling, people just think that something is recyclable and throw it in the can. They just hope that it's recyclable. And what happens is it gets to these facilities and it gunk's up machines, it causes malfunctions, it even can cause issues with safety to workers. So what we're trying to do here is provide this, this system where people can actually go on and search so that we're reducing our contamination rates and therefore reducing the costs to the county.
Okay, Squire Blackburn?
Yes, thank you, Brittany, for presenting today. I know at our last court meeting, there was concern about how it would be funded the following two years without knowing the grant approval. And I really appreciate you talking to Central Kentucky Holling and getting them to agree to cover the next two years of the contract if we don't get our grant funding. And I really appreciate you going above and beyond to make sure this happens.
Thank you, Squire. Anybody else? Squire Booth again?
I wanted to know from Brittany if those waste locations are identified, who picks it up and takes it to the desired facility?
Are you talking about anything that's on like a large item that's on the side of the road?
Well, that and anything that's identified by a residential user. Who picks that up? Does the Central Kentucky Holling pick that up? Or is there, are the facility that is recommended for disposal of that waste, they pick it up?
So usually what I'm seeing in my tenure in this position is that that does fall on the road department. So they are called, and John, you can back me up or tell me if I'm wrong. But say somebody calls in about a couch that's just laying on the side of the road. If it's out in the county, I usually give Billy Joe a call. And he'll go check it out and see what's going on. He'll pick it up and dispose of it properly. The same, I mean, he runs the appliance, the appliance pickup as well. If it's in the city, city staff take care of that, and that's all on them. But Central Kentucky Holling is only contracted to do the residential trash pickup, and that's the carts or the bulk pickups, which individual residents call and schedule with them if they have large items that they are trying to dispose of properly.
Yes, and they pay for that, right? They pay for that service.
Correct. The bulk pickups are about a $17 charge to a resident.
Yes, 32 has been my experience. But, you know, it probably varies, you know?
It's based on guys. Okay.
Okay, so just, I'm gonna piggyback on what you just said, Squire Booth. And so in this year, I can recall, large TVs, mattresses, box springs, couches, chairs, that have, that people have thrown out just on the side of the road. And so I say to you all as squires, you see these type of situations? Please call either Brittany or Billy Joe or John, and we will come out and get them and take care of them. We do not want that in our county. So we have a means to take care of it, but that doesn't mean that that's the way to get it taken care of as a resident. You have proper ways. We have a voucher system at our dump for you to use, which is free. So don't throw things on the side of the road. Use our voucher system to dispose of your trash when you have large items and take advantage of that. Are there any other questions on this? Squire Sebastian?
Yes, thank you, Judge. Brittany, it appears that you found a very positive collaboration with Central Kentucky Holling. So in utilizing the line item in the contract. So my question is, is how can the county max, continue to maximize that partnership and that collaboration in light of recycling issues and/or other solid waste issues that we have where we can utilize the contract to bring more resources back to Franklin County to utilize? Thank you.
So something that's in the contract is the utilization of dumpsters. So that is something that we end up doing when we are able to do like a spring clean event. So that's bringing more of the services that CKY provides into the county. It allows people to dispose of, you know, large items in a, in a situation where the location of the dumpster is closer to their residence in most cases than having them haul it off to the landfill. So we're able to provide that service in conjunction with them. And this will help bring a lot of, a lot of education to, to the point where we won't have as much litter on the sides of the roads. Like I think this, this will definitely be able to keep, keep a lot of this, a lot of the roadside litter down, large items, and people will be able to actually dispose of things properly. So, does that answer your question? I apologize.
I just want to have a follow-up with that. So would the dumpster that is in front, at, I'm sorry, at Darbyshire, would that be something that could be included in this arrangement and this collaboration that we have so that we are not paying for the dumpster?
So the dumpster, the paper collection dumpster is an extra service. So they are contracted to do curbside collection for trash and recycling. And since paper is something that's not currently recyclable curbside, that dumpster is an additional service that they are offering to us. And it's at a discounted rate. That rate for that roll-off dumpster is... That rate for that roll-off dumpster is discounted in our contract from their normal rates.
Squire Booth?
I think that dumpster idea is great for those roads that have ten or less pickup sites. Squire, Squire Tracy, we just put them at the entrance to that road, and then that can take care of it.
Okay. All right, Squire Tracy, I knew you'd wanna respond.
I think Squire Moore, I think he wants to respond as well, but Squire Booth, what you would have is just like we had in the past. You would have dumpsters, and they would be full, and you would have an abundance of trash and other things outside of the dumpster. It would not solve problems.
Yeah.
Would only create them.
Well, we could try and see.
Okay, okay. Squire Booth, your idea has been heard, but it's not going anywhere, so. So we appreciate your idea, and, but that's as far as it's going. Thank you for your comment. Squire Moore?
I'll just make a last comment, Squire Booth. The only good thing about those dump sites was we could go out there and shoot rats with a shotgun. But I don't recommend them, right? You get in them and scatter trash everywhere, and no, that's not what we need in this county. But thanks for your input.
Okay, all right.
Bears, they're bears, bears.
Okay, that's about enough on this one. Let's move to the next item. Chief, we're gonna hire a firefighter, and this is not a new position. This is a, filling a position that had someone in it, is that correct? Explain this.
That's correct.
Explain this if you would, please, sir.
It, we are, the abstract you see before you is to hire a firefighter at the same process that we use at the last meeting. This individual is the next qualified individual on that certified list. I recommend this to hire.
Okay.
Thanks.
Squire Moore?
I hate to bring this up, but the last two applicants, the driving records have not been to my liking, but hopefully they've moved on from that, will make a good firefighter out of it.
Squire Muller?
Thank you.
Squire Muller, you had your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Chief. I have some concerns, I believe, also like Squire Moore. Recently, I think the gentleman has a charge against him that could hurt his driving ability with us, and I know as a business owner, we have a hard time with that. I'd hired somebody who had something similar, and they were not allowed to drive on our policy for five years. So I have concerns with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Squire, and I can assure you that we have vetted this with legal in the past, and with the NFPA, and Betty Joe, as far as the workers, I understand your concerns.
Okay, any other questions for the chief? Squire Sebastian?
Thank you Judge, and Chief, I just wanted to ask a question, and maybe this would be more appropriate to you and Betty Joe jointly. The candidate did not fully complete the application. On page one, there's a section called employment desire. It's the last item in that section, and it indicates if your response is yes, you are supposed to list information that requested, and this candidate just answered yes and did not list the response. So I'm not sure how thoroughly we're vetting our applications when that comes through, so that all the information that needs to be considered is there. You probably have done that internally, it just was not part of the application process. So maybe you could address how that happens when they don't fully complete the application. Thank you very much.
Great question, Squire. And I can assure you, those questions were asked at least twice. If I had given you the interior, entire cover sheet, there was a note on the front scribbled by him saying, "I'm so sorry." This was a last-minute excuse or not, it was written on there. And I called the individual, spoke to him, asked him about some voids before the interview, and those questions, or some of those questions, were asked in the interview process, which you don't have, those scoring sheets, yep. Yes?
Okay, Squire Booth?
Yeah, okay, thank you. The question about if it violated any law, it says I will supply your answer upon request. Did you request it and did he reply?
Yes ma'am, if you'll look on the back section of that packet, those questions that I need the answer to are in there. Betty Joe?
Is that, is that the, the search through the administrative office of courts that we're doing?
Uh, yes ma'am.
Okay.
This is that, hello?
Hello?
Okay.
How's it going?
Hold on, babe.
I actually do the backgrounds on myself before we submit the packets to you guys, and I will keep in mind that one charge we are referring to has been over a year, and we cannot hold that against the employee. But we do have all the documents required. We have to have all those required before we even interview to the next process. The first process is the written, and then the second process is the interview, and we have to ask for all that information prior to the interview, or they can break them to the interview. And I believe the applicant provided those before the interview started.
Squire Sebastian?
I just wanted to make the point, and Squire Booth brought up the comments that were on the application. The key there is that the application does not, it specifies that you are to provide those as part of the application. It is not something that you can supply upon request. It's asked as part of the application. So it's very clear that that information is to be provided, but it sounds as if from the chief and Betty Joe, it has been, it's just not on the application for us to review. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Chief. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see Squire Tracy. I'm sorry, Squire. Squire Tracy?
Oh, Squire, thanks Judge. Moving forward, would it be possible just to get all that information? That way it eliminates some of the questions that we have. Obviously, this, nothing against this applicant, but there is a lot of information that we don't get to see that that should be in here.
That's an answer for Betty Joe and the chief.
That's, I'm just asking.
We usually, yes, we usually vet those in the timeframes are spread out. Our list was approaching expiration with no one left on it, and we started this process plenty of time to get all that information, and guess what? We entered into an era that stopped everything. We postponed that final process as long as I dared, we dared, and then we went on with the interviews. So part of it's all me.
Hey ma'am, what was said was that you all have received information, so all I'm asking is if you received information, that it be shared with us, because ultimately, we're looking at an application that's not thoroughly filled out completely. So we're just asking for that, for that information. I know you got a lot of information by the administrative office of the courts and all that, I'm just asking for the courtesy to get the same information that you all have received. Ultimately, we have to vote on it, so thank you.
Absolutely, I think we could accommodate you, and we, we probably should have documented that and added that to the application. You do understand that the interview process is very sensitive, but I think we could transcribe that.
Thank you, I understand. I had an interview yesterday through Zoom, so believe me, I completely understand, so thank you.
That's great, thank you.
Squire, Squire, Squire Moore, sorry.
Chief, what does your eligible applicant list look like, ma'am?
We have, including this one, five people that are eligible.
Okay, come on. All right, thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions, thank you, Chief. The next item is authorization to approve a cash transfer for the fiscal year for a million two hundred eighty-four thousand dollars. Ms. Susan, are you on the line?
I am.
Welcome, Susan.
We budget for cash transfers at the beginning of the year. Money, the shortfall in multiple funds is made up with tax revenue generated from the general fund, and is budgeted as a transfer to other fund. And then throughout the year, as needed to meet that shortfall, we transfer funds. So this is, hopefully, intended to be the final cash transfer for the year. We will be anticipating a budget amendment, however, for, for the jail fund and for the general fund. Amendments are, amendments are good because they recognize new revenue, and in fact, if you look at your, have looked at your financial report, you can see that we are, when you're over budgeting a revenue line, that's a good thing, and we are well over budget in multiple line items, which will enable us to technically amend that money in, and then it can be set aside as reserve for transfer, for end or fulfillment for shortfalls in certain expenditure line items, which we will have. The jail, as you know, we have had some issues with medical expenditures, and probably will be faced with, and you can see from the financial report that we're at ninety-nine percent of that line item, beginning transfers we've already made, so we'll probably be making some additional transfers to cover that in the next quarter or so. But overall, projection for the year-end, we will be in the black, Squire Muller, and we will be in, I'm not exactly sure how much, but being in the black is always a good thing. We took in more than you spent within a certain period of time, and that's what we, appear that we will be able to do. The, the other thing that that provides us the ability to do, and again, this is a little bookkeeping lesson here, but it's opportunity, is we budget every year prior year reserves in order to balance our budget, because we're not real necessarily clear about how quickly certain operations are gonna take place, and functions and projects are gonna take place. So we have to cover that shortfall for the year, within that, you know, twelve-month period. So this cash transfer, one way to look at it, if you look at the, what you see is the budget balance, you see a budget balance on the road fund cash that was budgeted, has an available amount of nine hundred and eighteen thousand. Well, we have significant road projects that are being pushed out into the next fiscal year, that we will not use, we will not have the need to cover those expenditures in this fiscal year, so technically, we'll have a budgetary savings in that transfer line item of, you know, six hundred plus thousand dollars. Same thing with that federal fund, where we had budgeted for the timing of that project at Farmdale to take place, and it's, it will be pushed out, so there's a budgetary savings there, as well as the need for transfers. The fire fund, I'm, like I'm showing a year, I'm showing six hundred thousand GUs, we'll see how that, through the year-end, that projection may slightly change, but we still have a significant balance available for, for transfer. And then the, the capital fund cash, as you know, we had made a provision for a placeholder for, of a hundred thousand dollars for some sort of action on a fire truck, but we're changing that and moving it out into the next fiscal year, where we'll be borrowing money. So, again, the cash transfer, it does not increase the overall budget or decrease any budget, it's within what we had planned.
Squire Sebastian?
Thank you Judge. Trucker, can you just, a little bit, and you've done some of this, what activities that we're finding at the end of the year that we need to take care of and kind of make sure that appropriate funding is there? And I think you may have touched on some. At some point during your discussion, my phone started sounding like the Peanuts teacher, so I missed some of the words that you shared with everybody. So I apologize, it's probably being out here in God's country in the great first district.
Don't ever apologize for being on the river, Squire, that's a wonderful place in our community. I'm sorry, I wish I could sing a little Peanuts song, I love them, but anyway, it's more instrumental, right? Anyway, where were we, what we need to spend? Well, and there is an unpleasant topic there. It looks like we still have an obligation that I was reminded of for our occupational tax agreement, our shared tax agreement, for another expenditure for shared taxes through, let's see, that's based on a calendar year, so that was reconciled, and we have not, we made one of the shared tax payments, but the county attorney can back this up, that we have what's called the oh-six agreement, which is the, was the new businesses since oh-six, and how that, we trade checks back and forth on that, which is, it's close, but we are actually turning more over to the city on, on the oh-six agreement. And then there's the old agreement, which was based on the fact, some of the factories and part of the industrial part, that I had been instructed that it is still a part of the, of our obligation to fulfill on the inter-local agreement for sharing taxes. So I think that's, if I remember off the top of my head, that's going to be about eighty thousand dollars that we have to turn over to the city, and we have not executed that, that expenditure, and I've only got twenty-five thousand budgeted, so I'll have a budget transfer if we're going to meet that obligation in this fiscal year. Other expenditures that we have to meet, of course, we've got four more payrolls, they are always the biggest item, biggest part of our, of our budget is in personnel and benefits associated with personnel. The, the jail fund, medical, that's based on some overages. We already, I believe, have obligated the full twelve months, we are showing in coverage for the twelve months of the monthly agreement, but then we are charged for medical overages to some formula that the jailers probably aren't more familiar with, and they reconcile that billing, but that comes in at the tail end, you know, after the fact, so I don't even really know how much to anticipate there, other than when I talked to him this morning, they were pushing to try to, to get that billing in and get an idea of how much we're going to need for that operation. But as far as other big-ticket expenditures to finish the year, off the top of my head, they're not coming mine. In this court, you can see the bills to the city for the, the emergency services, the nine-one-one, and our ambulance service, I believe those are in this court packet. So we've, we've fulfilled a quarter of those. Otherwise, the haul contract, we have one more month of that to pay, which is, what, a hundred and forty thousand or so a month. So, if that answers your question, Squire Sebastian? So, if that answers your question, Squire Sebastian?
Yes ma'am, that, that helps me frame this out, thank you.
Okay. Squire Muller?
Thank you Judge, and thank you Susan. Hopefully you got some good time yesterday. Quick question, during our last budget meeting, the judge talked about the spending freeze, trying to hone in on finances for the rest of this year. Do you know what date that went into effect? Because I didn't get to write that down.
We said that would be by the end of the month.
Oh, so it, not till the end of this month or last month?
End of, well, the, the total freeze would be the end of the, end of the month, end of this month, end of May. But we've asked them not to spend unless they really needed it. And then at, at the end of May, it's over, okay? So you, so we didn't say, you know, if you need to get something and you absolutely have to have it, then I told them, okay, but by the end of the, by end of May, you're not going to be, that's it, we're through. So there are still things that, because of some of the department heads said, whoa, 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 wait a minute, I can't get this until this time and we need this, so that's, so that's how we looked at it, Squire.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Alright, Susan, the treasurer's report.
The official report that you have in your packet is simply our monthly report from April. Obviously, we're well into May and pushing on, well past that, but as a matter of record, it is a requirement for the treasurer's office to provide a, a monthly report on behalf of the jailer and to fiscal court, and this just puts it in the record that we've fulfilled the, the April, the April. We go above and beyond with, with our recording, every agenda with the list of claims and so forth, but, but this one is the one for the fiscal court clerk to put in the record book for April.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to Squire Muller's question. Squire, there is a checking balance, anybody that receives, sends a bill in, it has to go through Tamara, Susan, it goes through Tamara, Susan and me, and if it's spending that we don't think is, is necessary, we don't allow that to happen too. So that, so there's another way to make sure that we're not frivolously spending money, so I help.
No, and I, and I appreciate that Judge, I'm not accusing the department heads of doing anything like that. I just wanted to, I just need some clarification there because we are trying to tighten it up, so thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
It was April twenty-eighth that you had halted freezing spending unless it was absolutely necessary.
Okay. Okay, payment of bills, next item, payment of bills? Any questions on the payment of bills? Okay, I'm sorry, Squire Sebastian?
Yeah, I'm just checking to see if there was a typo on page one of the jail budget. It says in the office of hotline that over two thousand dollars was spent for ink pens and pencils and paper clips. So I'm just trying to make sure that that wasn't a typo, because it's very easy to, to slip an extra number in there.
Squire, I mean, Jan Urbana, are you on?
I am. I'm, I'm being told that that was more than just pens and paper clips, but let me double check, I don't have that in front of me.
Okay.
There's only so much room that you can.
Sorry, that's, that's what it said, it just said on our paper that it was pens, pencils and paper clips. So I was just trying to be sure, because I thought it was probably a typo, just a slip of the finger.
Okay.
I would hope we're not spending that kind of money on that, Squire Sebastian, I appreciate you pointing that out, I would double check.
Squire Muller?
Can I maybe ask Andrew a question? I know what on, on our re-referring bills, you know, cell phones and stuff, when was the last time that we negotiated our contract with Verizon?
That, I actually negotiated that contract, Squire Muller. And that is, we had switched from, since I've been here, it's been looked at closely. When I originally came to the county about ten, eleven years ago, we were with AT&T. And the structures have changed on how they do the billing. At that time, you had shared minutes, so it was really hard, you would have to juggle a group of callers. And so then Sprint came, came to us and offered a much more competitive rate, and then Verizon came out with an even better plan. So what we have with Verizon is actually really good. Every line that you see on there is unlimited minutes. Where before, an unlimited plan would probably cost us about a hundred dollars a month. So like, you and Squire Sebastian have unlimited on your phone and we're looking at like forty-five dollars a month, they actually give us the first responders rate on those. I understand that there are some other plans in the works, possibly with another vendor as they're expanding, and we are looking at that also. But it, those costs are something that I have just taken upon myself to track quite often.
When did you negotiate this one?
This one has probably been a couple of years ago, but there's, you can't really negotiate it because it is a set contract rate. But it's a really good rate because we get the first responders rate. It's the same, same plan that the city has.
Squire Tracy? I'm sorry, okay, okay, any other questions?
Judge, this is Jake, can I clarify?
Sure.
Squire Sebastian, I had her pull the invoice and that was prior to the freeze, and that is paper, file folders, that's pretty much the, the whole office supply stuff, does that answer your question?
Sir, that, that helps a whole lot, because that's a whole lot of pencils and ink pens.
Yes ma'am, thank you for that question though.
Okay.
Sure, I have a, I just have a couple other questions, sir?
Yes, sir.
Is it okay if I ask them or?
Yes ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, I, I saw that there was a bill here for water repair at the temporary shelter. Can somebody tell us a little bit about what happened? Because I think the temporary shelter in that, in a gymnasium, so was there a flood or a leak or, that was the housing impacted somehow?
Yes.
To all that?
Okay.
Oh, I'm, go ahead.
This, from what I understand, yes, there was a leak in the shower system where they couldn't take a showers. Now that's all I understand. Let me see if Tommy's on, because Tommy handled that, but he talked to us about. Now I believe this is going through the COVID funds, but Tommy, are you on? Tommy Russell?
He, okay, he said he will be on in just a minute.
Tommy's gonna get on in just a moment, Sherry, so we can ask, he can, he can clarify that.
I, I just have a couple more.
Okay, go ahead.
Our emergency manager. The commodity deficit to Lexington Urban County government, can somebody talk a little bit about what that entails? That we're paying for a commodity deficit? And then the last question I have is one about transcription services from January and February, and it doesn't indicate what those transcription, it may be in some note somewhere, because I think our notation lines are really limited by character space. So if somebody could talk to us about those three things, commodity deficit and the transcription services from January and February. Thank you very much.
Tamara, you talk about the transcription?
Oh, okay, so the.
Or either one, if you could.
Okay, the transcript services are the transcripts that the court requested for the public hearing and the regular meeting regarding Duncan Road. So the dates that you see on, listed in the description are the dates of those meetings. The deficit is what Brittany talked about earlier. We split the recycling costs with Central Kentucky hauling. So we actually, when we receive a bill from the recycler, we also in turn invoice Central Kentucky hauling for half of that, but you're seeing the entire full bill. But that is built into the Central Kentucky hauling contract that they split the cost of recycling. Should the recycling start causing us to make money, we will also have to split those profits. So right now, we're splitting the deficit.
Okay. See any other, seeing no other questions, let's go to other business, and Tommy, whenever Tommy gets in, Sherry will have him respond. Okay, any other business before the court, Squire Tracy?
Thanks Judge, I just got a quick question from the informational packet for Jay Labana, if he's still on?
Yes sir.
Jayler, just one quick question, I noticed there was a promotion made at the jail, did the jail have someone of rank and file leave?
I haven't had any promotions in a while, Tracy, can you be more specific?
I just, I don't want to use any names, it just says effective day four thirteen, change reason promotion.
I'm not clear on what it is, I asked Betty Jo, I haven't promoted anybody in a little bit on no raises in a while.
Betty Jo, can you answer that?
Yes, those are from our last payroll, usually that's about three or four weeks behind. If we receive a twenty-twenty to change a pay rate, there's a description on there, and that's the description we put on the paperwork. I would have to go back and look and see who that, or that position was. But we receive twenty-twenty's from the jail on, on pay rate changes based upon extra job duties or promotion.
No, it, no, was it to a sergeant?
Jay Labana, I don't, I don't have any idea, I was.
If you. We have, I'm sorry, the, when a supervisor takes over, they're on a six-month probationary period, and when that probationary period kicks in, and I believe in that, in April, we had a sergeant, we had a sergeant go into his pay rate after a six-month probation. What is the date, one five, oh, four thirteen, two twenty?
Yes sir.
Yeah, and that, his six months started in, it's sergeant promotion after tenure. It's basically he gets a raise after his six-month probation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else, another business?
Tommy's still trying to join.
Okay, seeing none, Tommy's still trying to get on constitutional officers, any constitutional officers or department heads? Hearing none, next is, okay, let's, authorization to adjourn, we're gonna adjourn this. And Squire Sebastian, I got you, Squire.
So.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, Judge, do you have anything to share with us?
If I did, I'd tell you.
Do you have anything to share with us Judge?
If I did, I'd tell you.
Okay, it's just, it's, if it's great help you're gonna report to.
And you do that through the various departments.
Do what?
It's held through your various departments when they give.
Okay, well, I usually count on the department heads to get out all information. If there is something, I, I did announce earlier about the public hearing, and I announced that at the beginning of the, of the meeting, so.
Hey Judge.
Who's asking that?
This, this is Charlie.
Okay, Charlie, okay?
I wanted to say a couple of quick thank yous, if everybody can hear me.
We got you.
Okay, last meeting, we approved the application, or the, you know, to apply for the grant, the recreational trail grant. I wanted to thank Ann for that and her work on that, and I also want to thank John Mitchell and the road department. They've been coming up and helping us mow and help keep Lakeview Park in, in some kind of a decent shape over this, over this mess we're in. So I just wanted to recognize Ann and John and their, their hard work and their staffing and, and helping Lakeview Park kind of plow forward.
Great, thank you, thanks, Ann and John for your, do what?
I think Tommy's on.
Tommy, are you here, are you on?
Can you hear me, David?
Yes, yes. Tommy, we can hear you.
Okay, alright, on that bill at the, the shelter at Frankford High Gym, when we went into that, looking to open a shelter, there were some issues with the shower system. To be able to open a shelter, you have to have obviously showers, ADA compliant, things of that nature. So we went into that, there were some issues that they hadn't used the facility for a while. We asked them to look into those. I knew there was gonna be a real repair bill on that. It came back more than I thought, but that is half of the cost from the plumber to get that system up and running so we could open this shelter. The city's got a half of that, and I thought it was appropriate to split it between the city and the county on the COVID funds. And actually, I asked Mr. Joe Hancock to revisit the bill, and he did for us, and being the good community service partner, he did, he adjusted that as much as he could, still just to cover his, his parts cost on that.
Okay, Squire Muller?
Thank you Judge, hey Tommy, quick question, I know the, the temporary shelters, you know, where it is, and they have been on schedule to be renovated. Is there an end date for the shelter and a start date for construction of that property, do you know?
Oh, and actually, that, that was a concern right off, Squire Muller, is what they were gonna do, but I don't think, I'm sure COVID's got everything pushed back, for me to end the shelter will probably come even when Frankford High has to start their construction or start their school year or this COVID thing goes away, where I can get rid of some social distancing. We're, we're exploring a lot of options for shelters and how to accommodate our homeless population, which we have a very large homeless population.
Okay, thank you Tommy.
Okay, any other questions from caution, from department heads or constitutional officers? Seeing none, let's now go to the voting session. And so this is the voting session of the fiscal court meeting of May fifteenth, twenty twenty. Clerk, will you call the roll?
Squire Sebastian?
Here.
Squire Blackburn?
Present.
Squire Muller?
Present.
Squire Tracy?
Here.
Squire Boo?
Present.
Squire Muller?
Here.
Judge Wells?
Here, okay. Let's stand for the pledge and let's all, we'll all say it together, the pledge of allegiance. And if you don't have a flag, just imagine the flag of our great country in front of you, okay? Let's all stand for the pledge, please. I'll start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks everybody. Okay, the first item on the agenda is authorization for approval of the minutes from a regular meeting of April thirtieth, twenty twenty. If you would, if you would just raise your finger.
I think we need a voice for the official record, I think it's gonna be better to.
Tamara says we have to have a voice, so.
You may wanna ask Rick to confirm, but I think for the official.
Rick, do we have to have a voice or can I look at a finger and say?
I, I, as, as these, as these meetings have developed, you know, you, you watch things and just want to make sure they're tight. I have a little concern that in the event, because this is the format, that voice, just to ensure appropriate voice recording or recording of the vote is done, I would have the court to, to indulge by voice votes on the voting section. I think that, that's important, I don't want to miss anything and I don't, I want the record to be tight. So I'd ask that that be tightened up a little bit, yes.
If you'll raise your finger, I'll call on you to say for motion. Squire Blackburn, you had your finger up first. Squire Sebastian, I saw your finger up, second.
Second, please.
Thank you, okay. Any discussion, call the roll?
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authoriz- authorization to approve the county clerk's claim for calculation of motor vehicle and boat bills in the amount of eight thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy cents for 2019.
Sebastian.
Still move.
Squire Sebastian, se- Squire Blackburn, thank you, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is second reading and approval of an ordinance, amending ordinance number eight, nineteen eighty-seven, relating to the zoning ordinance in Franklin County for three point one three acres of property, identified as tract one A, one B, and tract two of the suburban park subdivision PVA map number zero five zero dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero nine two point zero one, located at one zero zero three and one zero zero five Twilight Trail from limited commercial CI to industrial commercial District IC. Squire Sebastian, motion?
I want to second it Judge.
Squire, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Squire Moore, second, discussion, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
We didn't hear you, Squire Sebastian.
Sorry, yes, yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Uh, I wanted to, uh, second this because I was involved in the building of this back when I was about ten or twelve years old doing the dirt work out there, so yes, uh, I vote yes.
Judge Wells?
Did they have bulldozers at that time, Squire Moore?
They did, sir, they did.
Were those bulldozers the type that, that you had a mule and a, and a donkey, uh, or to, to make sure they weren't?
I had two tomcats and a shoebox.
All right, just, just checking with you, sir, all right.
Judge Wells?
Yes, the next, the next item on the agenda, first reading of an ordinance relating to the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one has been removed, the next item is authorization to approve a resolution approving projects recommended by District Five Maintenance Staff of the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet for twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one to the rural secondary program.
I'd like to make that motion Judge.
I can't imagine why.
I'll, I'll sec-.
Okay.
I'll second it, we're going to need a way to get to the river.
Yeah, okay.
Get down that road.
Okay, all right, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, uh, next item is authorization to approve a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for grant funds under the Federal Victims of Crime Act, otherwise known as VOCA, through the Commonwealth of Kentucky Justice and Public Safety Cabinet.
JW.
JW?
I'm here.
Okay, Muller, Squire Muller?
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Squire Sebastian? Squire Sebastian?
I know, I know.
Think she's frozen there. Let's go, let's, okay, let's, who's the next?
Okay, Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization to approve a resolution authorizing the filing of an application for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one Waste Tire Grant Program with the Kentucky Department of Environmental Protection, Division of Waste Management.
I'll move.
Moved by Squire Moore?
Second.
Seconded by Squire Tracy, discussion, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization to approve a resolution authorizing Franklin County to enter into a three-year contract with Recollect Systems Incorporated for a web-based application focusing on solid waste management information for resident use, which will be in the, what?
I'm sorry.
Which will be no calls to the county.
I'll move.
Squire Moore, seconded by Squire Blackburn, discussion, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes, and I want to explain my vote, uh, I know this is a, a three-year agreement, and I hope we are very mindful as we continue through this three years, that technology advances, and we want to make sure we're using the most, uh, robust technology to serve our community, I heard that only two thousand individuals in Somerset, Palisade County used it, so that's a, you know, so, as we near the end of this, we need to look at it to make sure we're, we're expending funds, if we have to get to the point of expending our money wisely, thank you.
Squire Blackburn?
Squire Blackburn?
Um, I want to thank Brittany for, uh, I know the concerns we had about funding it, that the two years after the grant wore off, and not knowing our approval on, on the current grant, uh, her seeking out Central Kentucky Holling to, to make that happen, so I appreciate that Brittany, and I hope, yes.
Okay, Squire Muller?
Uh, I've got a comment also, Brittany's got a lot of attention today, uh, I think one of the things we talked about in the task force is getting the word out, I think like Squire Sebastian just said, uh, I think this is going to pass, but it's going to take everybody to communicate to the community, um, so we use the app, so that's the most important thing is to follow through, so my vote is yes.
Squire Tracy?
Um, what I'd like to say is I'd like to thank Brittany for understanding, uh, my original concerns, and going back and reviewing the contract agreement, and finding another way to finance it with the, uh, Central Kentucky Holling contract, so with that being said, yes.
Squire Booth?
Well, it looks like we have Squire Tracy as well as, uh, Director One for Two, thank. I am just concerned that it, the, uh, the, uh, software needed to run this application advances, that we'll have to pay for that, as I've come through with, through that with state government, but I vote yes on.
Okay, Squire Moore? Squire Moore?
Uh, I raised concerns about paying for this in the second and third year, and Brittany's taken care of that, with thanks to our Squire, and so I vote yes.
Okay, Judge Wells?
Uh, Squire Sebastian and Squire Muller are exactly right, this, this app is only going to be as good a, as the users use it, and so it is going to be imperative that we get this out to the general public so they can use it, and so Brittany will be counting on that, uh, and, uh, so we would all, as this moves forward, we want to see how many people have signed up, if you could give us somewhat of a quarterly or, uh, every other month, uh, on how many people have signed up and, and are using it, but most importantly, this is a great, a, a great tool to solve a situat- to help solve a situation that we see down here all the time, I promise you, and I know that you get a little of it, but we get a lot of it, when recycling isn't picked up, or the garbage isn't picked up, or there are issues with the garbage, uh, our phones ring off the hook from the residents wanting to know why this, why that, and I think this would be a great tool to make sure that information gets out, that the garbage has been delayed, or recycling's not going to be picked up, or, or any of those kinds of major concerns that we hear down here quite often when that happens, so I vote yes on that. The next item is authorization to hire Andrew Brewer as our firefighter at our fire department.
I move that we, uh, hire Andrew Brewer.
Okay, Squire Booth, is there a second?
More.
I'll second.
Squire Moore, okay, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
I'll vote yes, because I, I see quite a bit of training that he has in his background, I am a bit concerned about the vetting process, because not all portions of the written application were completed, and that is a huge concern to me as we look across hiring all of county government, but as I understand it, there's a hiring fees in place, but when that back up, we need to, to vet these applications extremely thoroughly, and I appreciate the staff who took the time to do the inter- to do that for what we couldn't see, thank you very much.
Squire Blackburn?
I have the same concerns, I think a lot of people pulled up, but, uh, I want to defer to the, to the interview and, uh, the chief's recommendation, and I, I vote yes.
Squire Muller?
Uh, just a quick thing also, uh, yeah, I had some concerns as the other magistrate's, but I appreciate, uh, the HR department and the chief, uh, answering that, and making sure that, uh, the county's good, so, yes.
Squire Tracy?
Um, what I'd like to say is I understand the department hiring process, but again, uh, I think it's imperative that, that we receive as much information as possible in our pockets, so, but with that being said, I say yes.
Squire Booth?
I think that what we're saying is that we want everything to be on the application, and not have to read through the rest of the documents that are in the, uh, package given to us, but we can do that easily, I've always trusted the chief's judgment, and I do so now, I vote yes.
Squire Moore?
Uh, I was concerned about some things, but, uh, looking at his record, I, I think he'll make a, a very good asset, be an asset to our fire department, so I vote yes.
Judge Wells?
Uh, I think you're right, Squire Moore, I agree with you that, uh, he will be an asset, uh, he has a lot of experience, and, and that's what we need in our fire department whenever we can get it, because other departments around, around us are taking our firefighters whenever they can get them, and, and, and they're, they're enjoying our training, and so it, it's great that we can get fr- a firefighter from another department and enjoy their training that they've gotten, and, and along with that, Chief, I've got you on the line right here, I want to say to you and all the firefighters, first responders, thank you, thanks, thank you so much for what you're doing, and how you're, you're going about your duties, uh, just, just like it was nothing, but understanding that there is a huge concern, and so you're taking care of us, all of us can be assured that, that you, uh, are doing it in as safe a way as possible, but taking care of us that, uh, that need it, our community thanks you, and all the first responders for your great work, I vote yes.
What are you listening to, something below on that headphone?
Uh, I, I think he's got music going. He can't hear us, okay, the next item is authorization to approve a cash transfer in amount of one million two hundred and eighty-four thousand thirty-eight dollars for the fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty.
I'll move.
Squire Moore? Squire Muller, Squire Muller, will you say yes, second?
Yes, second, sir.
Thank you, sir, okay, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
I'll say yes, uh, and vote to approve that, but again, I'm going to continue to raise concerns, I know I've banked on this room since we got in here about using reserve funds to, to continue normal course of business, I know we are in very uncertain times, but it seems like this court is very intent on looking at the budget very thoroughly, so I commend us all for that process, thank you, Brittany.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Yes.
Judge Wells?
Yes, next item is authorization to receive the treasurer's report.
So move, second.
Squire Blackburn, will you say yes, second?
Yes.
Okay, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
I just want to, uh, show my appreciation to our treasurer, uh, this is a busy, busy time for us, but it's, it's, uh, a whole lot busier for, for our treasurer, and I say yes.
Judge Wells?
And, and thank you, uh, Squire Moore, for realizing what a great job Susan Lawrence does, and, and how much time and effort, and bless her heart, uh, she, like the rest of us around here, and I know you all too are, are stressed, uh, we seem to want this, we want that, and we wanted it yesterday, and it's, and there's a lot of stress on Susan to get everything out when you ask for it, and the way you ask for it, it's, it's a very difficult job, but Susan is doing a fantastic job to stay on top of all of our spending and keeping us in line, and, uh, when it's all said and done, we will have a budget, and it will be mostly because Susan has done her diligent work to make sure that our county, uh, will be able to proceed in it, and, and be very functional from the fiscal court standpoint, so thank you again, Susan, I vote yes, uh, the next item is payment of bills, is there a motion to deny any claims of the bills, seeing none, the claims are ordered to be paid, the last item is authorization to adjourn. Squire Blackburn?
I'm here.
Squire Booth, say second?
Second.
There you go, call the roll.
Squire Sebastian?
Yes.
Squire Blackburn?
Yes.
Squire Muller?
Yes.
Squire Tracy?
Just one quick thing, just to, to piggyback off you and Lambert as well, uh, with Susan, thank you so much for all your hard work, but when, when I see you again, I'd like to get an autograph, you made the paper today, girl, so keep up the great work, so with that being said, yes.
Squire Booth?
Yes.
Squire Moore?
Uh, I've got a red button here, I've been dying to, to hit, see what it does.
No, no.
Whatever I vote.
No.
I'm here.
No.
I'll say yes, I'm going to hit this button. That was easy.
Now you have to show the button.
Oh, easy one, oh, I thought you were talking about the alarm. Uh, yeah, it's easy, thank you, play that more often, please, sir.
Judge Wells?
Okay, uh, I'm going to vote yes, but before we hang up, there's a couple of things I need to say, as Sherri, you asked about this, but I wanted to say it at this time, number one, census, please, community, uh, the census is still going on, please, 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 this means so much to all of us, including yourself, fill out your census, make sure that you follow through on this, uh, it's a very, it's very easy, it can be done online, it takes five minutes, and it's a, it's a, it means millions of dollars to our community, so please, fill out the census, don't forget, uh, the next item is, uh, Charlie, are you on, Charlie Lewis, you on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, uh, uh, I saw, I've seen in the, in the paper, I've seen via cars in a parade, I've seen via the yards, the signs for those people, students that have graduated, and, uh, that didn't get to do a graduation, and I think it's, it is, it's a sad situation, but it's also can be one that we, if we put a, a silver lining to it, maybe we, there's something positive that can come out of it, Charlie, uh, your son is, is, uh, just graduated from Frank County High School and has gone through this process, would you briefly tell us about what kind of, what he's gone through, what you all, as a family, have also gone through to help celebrate? have also gone through to help celebrate to the best of your ability this graduation?
Sure, sure. Thanks, Judge and Court. Uh, appreciate y'all recognizing him. Uh, you know, it, it, but not just him, but all the seniors, um, definitely coming down the stretch to end your senior year with NTI classwork. That's the non-traditional instruction, and not having to go to school, um, you know, and, and then with the seniors not having a traditional graduation, you know, prom, I think they're gonna try to reschedule that prom and late flight, you know, and that's all, of course, hinged on, um, the COVID-nineteen situation, but, um, you know, their perseverance has been amazing, you know, they, they, they've been working hard and trying to get their classwork in. And like I say, that, you know, they missed senior breakfasts and, 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 uh, just time where they, you know, when you're in school, I mean, everybody remembers their senior year, um, you know, there's some good times, and, and they missed out on a lot of that. Um, you know, but I've been quite impressed with Jacob, you know, on a personal level, you know, he and his brother have been through quite a bit actually in the last couple of years, and, um, you know, their, their perseverance has, has been uncanny. Um, and Jacob, you know, they, they get up, go to work every day, and, and they, they found jobs, and, um, you know, that Jacob's been accepted to Western Kentucky University, which we're real, real proud of that. So I mean, he's, he's, he's ready, you know, we, we walked yesterday in the, in the gym, it was just he and his brother and, and me and, and my, and, uh, my mom and his, my mother-in-law, you know, his, their grandparents, uh, their grandmothers were there. You know, but other than the principal, um, and the, the filmographer, I guess, or whatever, the guy from Cable Ten, that was it. That was the only people in the gym, and you had to wear face masks, masks going in. Um, and then, of course, afterwards, we were able to take a few pictures and hang out and have some lunch, but, um, yeah, really strange times. Uh, uh, you know, I, I, I'm real proud of him and all his buddies and all these seniors, you know, I hope they, uh, you know, remember this, that, um, and they, they all get a chance to come back together maybe someday in a reunion, and maybe, you know, I'm sure that'll be the topic of conversation, but, um, I appreciate you, you, uh, recognizing him, and, and, but, but it's also all the seniors, you know, they, uh, we wish them well, and, and, uh, if you know any of them, you know, I know you can't give them a hug right now, but you might send my message. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you for sharing that, and you're right, this is crazy times, and, and all, and especially someone that is around my age, uh, don't laugh, Squire, uh, Blackburn, but, uh, we have high school reunions, and yes, there's several of us that make it to them, and you always talk about your high school days. And so I'm sure that all of these seniors, twenty years from now, this will be the topic of discussion of what we did and how we handled our crazy graduation, and so we wish everybody the best that's graduated, and whatever you do, whatever you pursue, do your best at it and, uh, be safe, and, uh, we appreciate the hard work that you've put in, and so thank you. JW, you're a teacher. You wanna say something about that, too?
Uh, it's, it's been really tough. Um, to be perfectly honest with you, you know, I teach construction technology, and it's a lot easier for me to be at work with the students, um, working together, um, you know, there's nothing substitute, substitutes doing something, um, as opposed to reading about it or writing about it. Um, a lot of my students are, are mastery learners, visual learners, uh, and it's, it's tough. I received over twenty-six hundred emails from students in the last, uh, I wanna say seven weeks, but most of them were in the last three weeks, uh, turning their assignments in, so, and today's the deadline. Um, grades will be going out today for Franklin County. I think Western Hills' deadline was twelve o'clock last night, and, uh, I'm glad those deadlines are over, but, uh, we still have to go back and hand, uh, type in every single final grade and semester grade, and, um, in the big scheme of things, it's not that big a deal, uh, but I would have much rather spend it with the kids than, uh, on the computer.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that, and, um, a, a little side note, and I know it's been hard for teachers. It's also been very hard for the parents. Uh, I hear the, I hear the parents, especially the younger ones, uh, in second, third, fourth, fifth grade, sixth grade, the what, and the, and the NTI, and how they have to go through that process. Uh, it's been quite an experience for the parents as well. Squire Moore?
Uh, yeah, Judge, before you say yes, there on the, uh, the head of the gap, uh, I just wanna add to what you said about the census. In my lifetime, this is the easiest census to fill out I've ever seen. It's non-intrusive, just fill it out, get it in. It means a lot to, to the state and to our community, and Charlie, uh, you're in my thoughts and prayers always, and, uh, your son will remember this for the, forever.
So here's our stat. Franklin County's at sixty-eight percent.
Thank you, Squire. Okay, um, and just, uh, Tamara, just show me a, a note that, uh, Squire Moore, uh, on, on what you just said, Franklin County right now is at, you can't see it, you can't see it, is at sixty-eight percent of, of, uh, the people in, in the county uh, have responded to the census, and sixty-four percent have responded from the city. So we need everybody, we need to get that up to, to a hundred percent, but sixty-eight percent is great for the moment, but not good enough for the long run, so let's make sure that we all sign up to the best of our ability. Last but not least, um, as we, as we've talked about today, Tommy Russell you've talked about, we're starting to open up. We're starting gradually to open up, uh, our, more, uh, areas in our park, our restaurants, uh, our businesses. Franklin County has been awesome. To all of you as residents of Franklin County, from all of us, from the fiscal court, magistrates, all of the elected officials in Franklin County, we say thank you for what you've done to keep yourself and others safe. But because it's eighty degrees today, and because it seems like it's summertime, and it seems like this is just, there's no issue now because we can all go out, it's not fifty-five anymore and raining, it's eighty. We cannot let our guard down. This horrible virus is not over, so everybody, please, do what you need to do. One, wash your hands. Two, wear your gloves when possible. Three, wear your mask when possible, and always keep your social distance. Please continue that as we move forward in this crazy, awful times. With that being said, Franklin County residents, all of us are proud of you. Keep up the good work, and we are adjourned.
Thank you, Judge.